The time is 5:30 PM. It is Tuesday, June 6th. I'm going to call the special city council meeting to order with the city secretary. Please call the roll.
Mitchell?
Here.
Tobias?
Present.
Hyzer? Flores Cale?
Here.
Zuniga? Bradshaw?
Here.
Parsley?
All right, five members present. We have a quorum. Next up is a comments period. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak? Seeing none, I'm going to close citizen comments period. It's now closed. Next up is executive session. Was that me? My last? All right, pursuant to Chapter 551 Texas Government Code, City Council reserves the right to convene to executive session from time to time as deemed necessary. During this meeting, the City Council may convene into executive session pursuant to any lawful exception contained in Chapter 551 of Texas Government Code, including any or all the following topics pending our contemplated litigation settlement agreement or to seek the advice of the city attorney or attorneys concerning legal issues pursuant to Section 551.071 Texas Government Code and Section 1.05 Texas Disciplinary Rules of Professional Conduct, Attorney General Inquiry, Mountain City Boundary Agreement, Possible Purchase/Exchange/Lease or Value of Real Estate pursuant to Section 551.072 to deliberate the purchase of real property or for public purpose, purchase of property for city facilities and public purposes, Personnel Matters pursuant to Section 551.074, Roles and Responsibilities of the City Manager, and convene into executive session pursuant to Section 551.087 Texas Government Code to deliberate regarding the offer of economic incentives to one or more business prospects that the city seeks to have locate, stay, or expand in or near the city. Project Line King, Hot Pursuit, DIY, Chiopet, Pearlie Whites. The end. All right, good evening, everyone. Sorry for being a little bit late. The time is 7:06. There was no action taken during executive session. There will be action taken now. I'd like to make a motion to approve an economic development incentive for first year on us, Project Pearlie Whites.
Second.
Motion by Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Flores Cale. Is there discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries. Seven to zero. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, we are adjourned. And now I'm going to call the regularly scheduled council meeting to order. The day is Tuesday, June the 6th. It's 7:06 PM. Would all please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The city secretary, please call the roll.
Mitchell?
Here.
Tobias?
Here.
Hyzer?
Here.
Flores Cale?
Here.
Zuniga?
Present.
Bradshaw?
Here.
Parsley?
Here.
All right, all members are present. We have a quorum. Next up, approval of the minutes.
Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve the minutes for City Council's special meeting on May 13th. Special meeting minutes for May 16th, as well as the meeting for May 23rd, 2023.
Second.
All right, motion is made by Mayor Protem, seconded by Councilmember Parsley, that we approve the minutes. Is there discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Our motion carries seven to zero. Next up is citizen comments period. At this time, we ask anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on any item to please do so. We do ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and that you direct those comments to the mayor and council. We also ask that you fill out a citizen comments form and submit that to either myself or the city secretary. I currently have three folks who have registered to speak ahead of time. First up is Alan Brown.
How are you doing? My name is Alan. Been living here in Kyle for about four and a half years. My daughter goes to school here. I love living in this area. I also work at Real House. The reason why I'm here is because of Miguel Zuniga told me to come and speak for it with you, with y'all. I'm training for the Olympics in fencing. And right now, I've moved up really fast. I'm ranked nationally 16th right now, and I've made it to the world championships for only doing this for 10 months. My next step is going to Milan, Italy. And it's, it would be, I would greatly appreciate everyone's support here trying to help me get there. It's not easy. I have some really good coaches. And I don't think that, from what I know, I don't know if anyone here from Kyle has ever done something like that. So I want to be the first one to do it. And I definitely want everyone in Kyle to be a part of that and share that experience with me as well. The Hays Press, they did an article about me here about a month and a half ago. You guys, I don't know if anyone's read it, but I mean, I can give it to you guys and pass it around. But, you know, at the end of the day, it would be tremendous. And I would be grateful to y'all that if y'all could, you know, support me in this journey. And it would, you know, mean the world to me.
Awesome. Thank you, Alan.
Thank you. Great job.
Good luck. All right, next up is Josh Keller.
Hi, my name is Josh Keller. I've been working with the Parks and Rec staff over in East Kyle by Waterleaf Park to build some nature trails in there. I've also created a Facebook group called Kyle Trail Coalition. Invite everyone in the room and everyone watching to join that if you're interested. A great way to share information. And I just want to thank the city for giving me the opportunity and giving us the opportunity to go into the public land and create these trails and use them and hopefully they'll continue to grow. I continually research other cities and other towns all throughout the country that have done what Kyle is trying to do with trails. I encourage everyone to try to do that. I would encourage Kyle to focus on cities closest to us to see how they're doing and copy what we can from them. Cities include Sugar Land, Cedar Park, Georgetown, New Braunfels, and San Marcos. When I have looked at these cities and what they've done and compare it to where the city of Kyle's plans are for trails and the execution of those plans, I see some issues that I'd just like to bring up from my perspective. I see in the trails plan and the vibe plan that there's a lack of definition of nature trails, specifically single track, double track, flow trails. A lot of people in this room probably aren't even familiar with those terms. Current plans don't mention entry points for beginners and youth. They don't properly integrate present and future parks. And they don't mention positive or negative control points. So these are just some things that I've learned from researching other plans, what maybe we could talk about integrating into the current plans. I also suggest that the city hires or integrates an expert in the area. I know it's budgeting time, so that's kind of why I'm here. So my request is that Kyle budget for a position, a linchpin dedicated to address the need for proper balance between concrete, gravel, natural trails, flow trails, and bike parks. Of all the people that I've talked to, Alan Ross seems like the best candidate for this position. He has a lot of experience from the beginning, from long before I've gotten involved. When I talk to him, he educates me on the engineering and the concrete trails. He seems to be such an expert in that. And what I'm most impressed with is the way he listens to our community, our group, tell him about nature trails and flow trails and what single track is and how it works. He's been very receptive to that. And he seems eager to want to get out there. I've actually walked with the trails with him recently just to kind of tell him what's going on and what we've been doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Tracy Shield.
Hello, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members. I stand before you tonight as a granddaughter of a servicemember who served during World War II, a daughter of a father who served during the Vietnam, and as a partner of a, of Major Charles Chapa who currently serves. I want to thank former council member David Wilson. He had an idea many years ago for a memorial. And he pushed it, pushed it, and then former council member Damon Vogly kind of joined the cause. And then we had a plan to expand that park. And thank you to former council member Rick Coach for negotiating for some money to help build it. Thank you to the mayor for, he negotiated some money for the, for building it. And then also the councils since who have helped fund that park. That park showed why it was built last week. The Memorial Day service that was performed on Memorial Day was beautiful. I want to thank the VFW for putting it on, the Boy Scouts for doing a wonderful job, and then also council member Parsley for your beautiful words and speaking in regard to the proclamation from the city council. Thank you. As I said, it was beautiful and that was the reason for the park. And it was a beautiful backdrop for it. Now, one of my favorite parts of the park is the POW MIA table. It reminds us that not all of our servicemen came home. And the tradition of setting a table to honor prisoners of war, POWs, and soldiers missing in action, MIA, began at the end of the Vietnam War. Every element of the table has a special meaning for serving, for service members, veterans, and their families. So when I came up to the table, I was slightly, I well know, very disheartened and very upset when I saw the wine glass broken. If that was an act of nature or, you know, an accident, okay, I understand. If it was done purposefully, shame on you and how dare you. I'm not going to read all the different elements of the table because then I really will lose it. But the inverted glass reminds us of the comrades who can't join us in our festivities and celebrations. That was, what that is in remembrance of. So I asked the city, please try to find it, you know, however we do it, but please fix it. I very much appreciate that. And again, thank you, everybody, for a beautiful Memorial Day service. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. All right, that is all of the forms that I have filled out in front of me. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward and speak on any item? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close citizen comments period. Citizen comments period is now closed. Our next up is agenda order. Is there anyone who wishes to make a request to move in any items? All right, seeing none, we're going to move over to agenda item number six. Consider appointment to CAPCOG General Assembly to replace Robert Rizzo. This is my item. It was brought to my attention that the, his spot on the General Assembly has been vacant for some time now. I believe that Councilmember Flores Cale currently serves in the other role. We have two seats. And so I wanted to bring forward if anybody had any nominations or wanted to volunteer. I think the meeting, meetings are, and Councilmember Flores Cale, you can help me, once a quarter?
Um, I think it's once a month.
Once a month?
Yes.
And it's during the, during the work week, during the day normally, it's like a luncheon, right?
It's, yeah, it's literally like an hour and you just go. And usually they're South Austin and they're in hotels and so it doesn't take that long. You could probably, if you had to get away, you could leave a little bit early.
Does anybody have any thoughts on that?
What, what, what do they do there? What is the general assembly function other than?
They discuss, like, last time we went and it was like a big event, we discussed like the roads and the road plans, not just for Kyle, but for all of central Texas. And so they had a really cool PowerPoint that they provided to us and it keeps us updated on their plans. I think we can get CAPCOG funding. And so with that, we can go listen, see if there's somewhere that the city of Kyle fits in and then decide if there's something that we want to apply for.
I don't know who, who is a representative for each of the organizations right now. Do you know, we have CAPCOG and we have council member Flores Cale, the Air Coalition who has?
She and I are sharing a seat on the Air Coalition. Okay, we're not sharing a seat on the Air Coalition.
The Clean Air Coalition is a, the Clean Air Coalition is a function of CAPCOG. The General Assembly is a, is a seat on the main board. And then from the General Assembly, they select an executive board, which makes a lot of the decisions. So Councilmember Rizzo was selected to be the vice, vice, vice chair to a portion of that. I'm not exactly sure what his function there was, so. But that is, the more you serve, the more you get involved, the more opportunity there is to represent the city at a regional level, so.
I can volunteer. I don't know if anybody else wants.
Yeah, I'd like to, yeah, if we can flip a coin.
I guess the, the question would be is availability because it is during the work week. And for those who do have full-time employment, like for me, it is hard to get away, period. I'd have to, a lot of my stuff is in, in the afternoon. So I guess if Councilmember Parsley or Mayor, if both of you are interested, I guess we could just go with taking nominations if we want to do that or how we want to go forth on that.
I will nominate Councilmember Parsley.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Councilmember Daniella Parsley to the CAPCOG General Assembly seat.
Second.
Motion by Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Zuniga. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries seven to zero. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Daniella.
All right, next up is agenda item number seven. Appoint Daisy Santos to fill vacancy for Saint Four on the Parks and Recreation Board. Ms. Espinosa.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mariana Espinosa, Parks and Recreation Director. We come before you today for a recommendation to approve to appoint Daisy Santos to fill a vacancy on the Park and Recreation Board. The vacancy was posted for one month from April 3rd until May 3rd. We received 10 applications and we interviewed nine applicants. On the interview committee was myself, Parks and Recreation Director, Assistant City Manager Jerry Hendricks, and Councilmember Daniella Parsley. Ms. Daisy Santos is an educator with the Hays CISD for the past 11 years and a coach. She's also raised five children. And she is here today if you all have any questions.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Councilmember Flores Cale.
Can we have her please come up? I've got, I got, I just want to make a statement, okay? I am not going to hold it against you that you rescheduled the tennis match from a Wednesday to a Monday. So I didn't, I didn't realize I knew you until I like, of course, I Googled to see who it was. And my daughter was playing in the district tournament match. And we, so we had talked about it because we ended up rescheduling. I'm going to say at the, like, we hugged it out. It was such a good, she's so easy to talk to. She's such a fun person. I have no doubt that you're going to bring so much to at least the, like, the sports part of the Parks Board. I wanted to let you know, I'm excited. And I giggled when I saw your face. And I talked to my husband about it and he was like, she, yeah, she's going to be great. And so I said, okay, I'll let her know that I'm not going to hold it against her. And we did come in second, by the way. If we were to play that night, I think we would have won. That's what I was going to say. Thank, thank you for applying. Yes, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. I'm looking forward to serving my community and coming up with new ways to create opportunities for us and all that good stuff.
Councilmember Parsley.
I just wanted to say thank you for volunteering and applying to the war. I really love your energy and all of your ideas that you had and you were bringing up during the interview. It was really an easy decision for us to, to go with you. So thank you so much for, for your time and welcome.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Flores Cale.
No, I just wanted to make the motion to approve agenda item seven.
Motion by Councilmember Flores Cale, seconded by Councilmember Parsley, that we appoint Daisy Santos to the Parks and Recreation Board. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Santos.
All right, next up, agenda item number eight. Proclamation for National Garden Week, June 4th through 10th, 2023. I believe we do have some representatives here of the local garden committee. And so this was a request by them to recognize this part of the week. I want to read this proclamation out and then I will invite y'all to come forward for a photograph. And if there's anyone who wishes to come forward, maybe one person want to come forward and make a statement, that'd also be just fine. Does that sound good? All right, whereas gardeners have a passion for nurturing the beauty and resources of the earth through the planting of seeds, the care of all plants, and riches of their efforts. And whereas gardeners seek to add beauty, splendor, fragrance, and nutrition to our lives throughout the growing of herbs, vegetables, foliage, and flowers. And whereas gardeners work to preserve our country's traditional spirit of independence and initiative through innovation and hard work. And whereas gardeners advocate the importance of all creatures, large and small, that share our world and their roles in a balanced and productive ecology. And whereas gardening furnishes a challenging and productive activity for our citizens, for those just learning as well as those having years of experience. And whereas gardening promotes a healthy lifestyle, that lasts a lifetime, helps reduce stress from other areas of your life, teaches that rewards can come from diligent efforts. And whereas gardening enables members of the garden clubs across the nation and the world to make a world of difference in the communities where they reside and work. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Travis Mitchell, Mayor of the city of Kyle, do designate the week of June 4th through 10th as National Garden Week. And in Kyle, Texas, and publicly acknowledge the importance of gardening and the numerous contributions of gardeners. So thank you for being here. And if you wouldn't mind stating your name and just telling us a little about why you made this question.
My name is Jenna Grimes. I am the president of Kyle Garden Club, which was established in 1957. So the, the members of the garden club have been serving our community for many years. And we really appreciate the, your support tonight. Among other things, we work with the Railroad Museum here. In the past, we have worked with the city hall itself and, and, but that has not been necessary recently. We also are planning on volunteering with the new Post Oak Community Garden. That's a project that we're very excited about and looking forward to working with that group. And we just really appreciate your support and hope that we can give back to our community, continue to give back to our community in many ways. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Does anybody have any comments? Councilmember Flores Cale.
I just want to say thank you. And I'm equally excited about the garden. So of course, we can't have it unless we have our volunteers. So thank you and thank you to everybody who volunteers. That's kind of what pushes our community along.
We are welcome. I think it's a fabulous project.
Awesome. And I think you brought members of the club here as well. If y'all want to come forward and we'll take a photograph? Okay, all right, next up, CIP Road Projects and Consent Agenda Presentation. Mr. Barba.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Leon Barba, City Engineer. Mayor and Council, the city manager sent you a report this past Friday. Highlighted some of the projects that we've been working on. So I won't go into a lot of detail on this, but I did want to talk to you about some of the consent agenda items. So if you don't mind, I'll just skip through the project report. On consent agenda item number 12, this is a contract we want to award to CPN One Incorporated for about almost $70,000. This is to do a preliminary engineering report on a section of Dacey Lane wastewater system. Starts just north of BB Road and ends right at the Button Creek, right there by Dacey Lane, on Dacey Lane. Just FYI, this, there's two wastewater lines on Dacey Line. There's one on the west side, one on the east side. One's a 12 and one's a 10. But we need to upsize that particular line in there. So we're probably going to upsize that 12-inch line to an 18-inch line and look at the possibility of abandoning that 10-inch line. So this project was identified through our wastewater model back in 2015 as one of the, our second priority projects that we needed to work on. So we're finally getting to that project. As you also know, Indian Hills Paintbrush is being upgraded. So that particular lift station can carry a lot of flow. So we don't want those lines overflowing or surcharging. On consent agenda item number 13, this is an amount for $9,569 to award to SB Consultants. They are the original designers for the Elliott Ranch project. And we did have an amendment number two to the project. It was to pay for the additional services that we needed for them to work on. One of the dilemmas that you have when you do projects in the older part of town, you run into a lot of surprises and issues there that you didn't encounter as you were doing your design. So that ate up all of our money for the, on amendment number two. So we're just right now, just wanting to get the, what we call the as-bills done so we can wrap this project up completely. Consent agenda item number 14, that's change order number 10 to Sky Blue Utilities. They're the project contractor for the South Side Wastewater Improvements. This project, bear in mind, Council, this project was designed about five years ago. So when they designed this particular lift station, the air conditioner, for example, was pretty old designed. So the Public Works has asked that we upsize that air conditioner and get a better, much better unit that will protect all the equipment that we have in that lift station. And this should be the last change order for the, the South Side Wastewater Project. And that's all I had. Do you have any questions?
Councilmember Flores Cale.
I just want to say thank you to you and Public Works for putting up with all my questions. I made sure I asked them prior to, so, but I'm not going to ask anymore because I think I have all the answers. Thank you.
Well, one thing that bothered me is that we still didn't answer your question about how far back this project started.
I figured that was probably not even, there was paper not invented and pen not invented, so maybe we don't know. It was a long, I mean, I was like, isn't it decades?
The first preliminary, preliminary engineering report was done in September of 2011 by Neptune Wilkinson. Then it was updated in May of 2013. And about 2014, when I got here, we started acquiring easements. We finally went to contract, actually started construction in December of 2018. So it's been a long project, for sure.
I still say we need to have a big celebration once it's finished, like a big party. So, but thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
Okay, does anybody have any other questions for Leon or for Chief or anyone on any of the items on consent?
I do. Are we going to go through the whole thing right now?
We can, yeah. This is where, this is where we can do it.
So I do have a question about item number 10. It's like, do we have an in-house maintenance engineer that does any preventive maintenance?
That's a hard question.
Harper?
Mr. Wilder.
I just kind of want to have an idea how the preventative maintenance works for these pumps. If there is something scheduled, since we have to do repairs, it seems like they're very costly. I know it's just more cost-effective to do preventive routine maintenance. And I don't know for doing that, how does it look like?
So those pumps run regularly. I mean, that, that pumps every bit of the effluent to the golf course every day, pretty much, especially, excuse me?
To the golf course?
Mm-hmm.
Do they contribute to the maintenance of our pumps?
So we took over. We have the lift station that's behind our plant, our sewer plant, that provides to the golf course. We have that lift station as well as all of the line that goes to the golf course.
Is that like in, is that how they pay off for the water we give them?
It, it was a prior agreement between the city and the golf course. I don't know the background to that, but it was a prior agreement where the city took that on. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do we have any pumps down at any time in order to do maintenance to those to keep kind of like the life cycle a little?
There's two pumps. One of the pumps was, was down. And then, excuse me, when this pump went down, there's one pump, and so they're sending this off. We had to hurry up and get that back because if that other one- We had to hurry up and get that back because if that other one goes down, we can't supply the golf course. And we're under a contractual agreement to provide them with water each day.
Okay. I kind of, and I don't know if this will be on the topic, but I would like to see about how much does it cost in total repairs when we're sending our water to the golf course? Is there any way we can look eventually into a cost relation to what water goes to there? And kind of like, I want to know what the agreement looks like?
That's what I was going to advise. There's a previous agreement that the city entered into with them. I think at the time, I don't know all the details, so I don't want to speak out of turn. But I know at the time that, that the city and the golf course had a meeting and discussed everything to, to help out both.
Okay. I would like to see that at some point. And then if, if we do have that routine maintenance, I just would like to take a look at it.
Yes, ma'am.
That will be for question, for number 10, I'm sorry. And then for number 11, and I don't know if anybody has about number 10 before I jump into another one.
I just want to know if I can get a copy of the same agreement, please. Brian? Thank you.
Okay. And then I have a question for number 11, which will be probably Chief. Hi, Chief. Do they provide maintenance or do they provide setup troubleshooting with this lease?
They do, yes, ma'am. They'll come out and service those anytime we call, multiple times a week if necessary. They come out and bring all the, all the equipment, the ink, everything that's needed for lease.
Okay. Is it better to have them leased and purchase them and then have warranty on those?
It has been from, from our standpoint, because they, our copiers are heavily used and they do require regular servicing. When we purchase those and try to get that servicing outside, it's been better for us to have quick service, quick regular visits from their maintenance techs. And then they're going to also move our existing printers and copiers. So, and so they're our current provider already. They're just providing these copiers into the expanded areas of the new Public Safety Center.
Okay. Thank you. That was set for it.
Mayor Protem.
I have a follow-up question on 11. So I guess the reason why is, is we lease these out is because a lot of these printers are like smart printers to where, you know, you have to have a lot of IT involved. So I guess if, if we purchase them outright, we'll be responsible for toner, all maintenance, and everything like that. Those things get outdated in a year or two, then we would have to find new printers eventually and parts and products and have someone come out and service. I guess versus here, whenever there's time for upgrades in the system itself, which is printers, we can, if we get a specific model and it's time to upgrade, will we be able to get them switched out to where it's uniform across the office?
Yes, sir. We have the ability to negotiate that and that's what we've been doing in the years past as well.
Okay. So that's the difference we would see purchasing versus leasing out.
Certainly. If we, we wear out the printer, they bring another one to replace it right away and put a new one in its place. As you can imagine, we make a lot of, a lot of copies and a lot of printing of paper, filing cases and whatnot. So yes, sir, they'll keep them up to speed for us.
Okay. That's good. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments on?
14.
Okay.
And then I just wanted to know from item 14, how much is left into the fund for the South Side wastewater improvement project?
It's bottom 14. Is that?
Well, it's a, it's a prevez question that she asked. I don't see prevez.
Oh, for 14, the Sky Blue Utilities?
I'm sorry, the question?
Oh, I just want to know how much is left into that fund?
Oh, in the wastewater utility fund? Gosh, that would be a prevez question.
We can, we can find out.
Last time it was eight million. Do you remember?
It was pretty high.
It was pretty high.
You're talking about left in the, the CIP for the South Side wastewater?
Yeah. We're paying for it through the impact fees.
Not the total utility fund.
Yes, sir. We're paying for it through the wastewater impact fees and I'm collecting those impact fees as fast as I can, so.
Okay.
Any other questions? Mayor Protem.
Okay. So if we're going through consent, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Item number 21.
Okay. You're saying you just want to pull it?
Or we could ask real quick if you don't mind. That way we just get it. Okay. I know I've been in the past, Mr. Scrooge, you know, on this end, but if you could just briefly go over the pricing of where we came up with 93,000 for the holiday decorations so the residents can have an idea of what to expect or the reason why we, these could be at that price. And because some people are going to love it, then there's going to be some that will say, that's way too much money for the Christmas decorations for downtown. But we all know, once they're lit up, everybody loves it. So if you could just briefly go over that for us. Yes, exactly. While complaining about it's 93 grand.
Mariana Spinoza Parks and Recreation Director. So as in the approved budget, Council has approved 200,000 for each year for new holiday decoration for Mary Kyle Harts and City Square Park. And as we mentioned last year, one of our goals is to kind of take those older pieces and start moving them to other parks so that we can eventually have holiday decoration in all the parks. And so the recommendation for this year, a RFP was posted, and we did receive seven bids for holiday decoration. We specifically asked for the following items, for the Krug Activity Center to be transformed into a gingerbread house, for the illuminated light show on the largest oak tree at City Square Park, for the 17 trees in City Square Park to be wrapped all the way up to where the tree reaches the Y plus a little more. And so we can get as much as the canopies each year. We try to get more and more of the canopies. And then just for additional holiday decoration to include some animals or other pieces that would complement our existing ribbon tree. So this very brief presentation right here shows you some of the current displays that we already have. I won't go through each and every one. And the consent agenda item right before this is for the tree wrapping. And then this item, number 21, are for the following items. So the proposals to turn the Krug Activity Center into a gingerbread house, as you see here, for the illuminated light show on the largest oak tree and to kind of grow from the last two years to make it even bigger and better, for a castle, for reindeer. Our reindeer last year kind of looked like little puppies. So we're going to get some improved reindeers. For a photo op train to be very Kyle themed with the Kyle train.
Love it.
And then they complement our current decoration that we already have. And so that's how we come up with the 93,000 for this year. And this year, we are not recommending purchasing these displays due to storage and mostly storage and pricing. We are recommending to lease these ones this time.
Yes, that was also going to be the follow-up question because I know we, we are very limited on space for storage for a lot of our city items. So that, that just kind of clears up the difference between why we lease it out versus buying them. Again, it'd be like the same question we have with the printers. We buy the printers, then if they break or we need to replace them, then it'd be hard to find those specific models. Same thing here. We don't know if these items would break. If we leased them out, I know we would be able to have some kind of warranty on these and we could have them replaced or repaired if need be.
And we do have Alex with Artistic Holiday Designs on the line if there are any specific questions in regard to that.
I just want to say thank you. I am so excited. When I read this item, I even put a little heart next to it. So thank you so much, Mariana.
I think a lot of it was the gingerbread house because that was something that you brought last year.
I'm good, Mary. Thank you. I yield. Okay. All right. Councilmember Zuniga.
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to ask a question about item 19.
Go for it.
So this one, Jennifer, can you just give an explanation? I guess like this is efficient, but we're spending $900 a year to store the boxes and then there's another $5 to shred each box? Is that correct? And?
Jennifer Kirkland, for the record, we are currently spending that at Safe Site in Austin. And right now, a lot of the boxes, when they were put into storage years ago, it'll just say city secretary files. And so we've been pulling those over the last several months and inventorying them and finding out what's past retention. And some of the, you know, a lot of the documents were things, the projects that, that everybody sees today, and they've just been boxed up and not very well labeled. So this is going to allow us to scan all of those so that we can have instant access to them.
Are they doing any of the organization or are they already organized by box so that you have easy access to the dates and the projects that are stored?
We will be inventorying them before we send them off to be scanned. So that way we'll have a checklist of what we sent off, what we get back. And if there's any, you know, discrepancies or anything like that, we'll be able to track those.
Okay. That was just my questions on it.
Any, any other questions? Councilmember Flor scale.
I just want to approve agenda items number 10 through 2022. Make a motion to approve agenda items 10 through 22.
Second.
All right. Motion by Councilmember Flor scale, seconded by Councilmember Zuniga that we approve agenda items 10 through 22. Is there discussion on the motion? The only thing I have is on the CIP Road Projects and Consent Agenda Presentation item, as you know, Mr. Langley has been putting a portion of that in his Friday weekly report. And so if there are no objections, I want to make sure that we can make an affirmative decision there. I think we'll probably stop going over the CIP projects at the beginning of each meeting to give us more time to focus on the business. And then we'll be able to have those items still sent out to us on a weekly basis, which is even more regularly than we get at a council meeting. And then the, but I do want to continue to have the consent agenda presentation portion of agenda item number nine, because I think that it's valuable just for the exercise that we went through just now where we can hear from staff on some of the items that we have questions on on consent. We don't necessarily pull those items, but we can go through it in an expeditious way. So that's my plan moving forward if everybody's in agreement.
Yep.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right. Motion carries seven to zero. All right. Next up is agenda item number 23, approved task order number three to RPS Infrastructure, Inc., Austin, Texas, in the amount not to exceed 750,900, or $9.75 for engineering services and design of Marketplace Avenue from 1626 to Marketplace Avenue existing. Mr. Cantalupo.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Joe Cantalupo. I work for K. Fries and Associates and I am the project manager for the team that is helping you implement your road bond program. So this work authorization is to approve, as the mayor explained, task order number three to RPS Infrastructure. It's in the amount of $750,000, $9.75. And it's for the PSNE for the Marketplace project. You'll recall that the Marketplace project is the last of the road bond projects to have their design contract brought before council and approved. And as a reminder, back in April of 2022, the city selected a handful of design engineers to do preliminary engineering reports to help support the bond vote, the bond issue before the city. RPS did the preliminary engineering report for Marketplace project. And they did that PER, the preliminary engineering report, under master services agreement. And that PER report was task order one. Of course, the bond was approved in November 2022. And not long after that, city council approved task order number two. It was just over $31,000 and it was for survey services. Those services were not implemented because at that time, there was still some figuring out that needed to do, to be done between the city and the developer. And here we are now. Since that time, about November 2022 and May of 2023 last month, since we've come on, we've worked with RPS a little bit and our team and city staff to help figure out with the developer where the placement of the road would enhance what they were trying to do with the city. That's all been resolved. And now we're ready for task order three. Again, it's at 750,000 and $9 to complete the PSNE package. I'll also add that this is one of the projects that was going straight from that preliminary engineering report to, to plan specifications and estimates. So we were able, because of the work that RPS had done on the preliminary engineering report, and because there was only one landowner involved, and because it was a greenfield development, I hesitate to say this because there's no such thing as a simple project, but this is a relatively uncomplicated project, at least in terms of the design and engineering. We were able to bypass the full schematic stage and go right to PSNE. So that's represents a whole lot of time saved and, and a bunch of money saved. And this work authorization includes the roadway design, identification, utility coordination issues in the design for that, right-of-way coordination with the property owner, of course, the survey and the geotechnical services. Those are all the things that will go into the PSNE package. And of course, there's continued coordination with the city through the GEC team. And they'll also help us figure out the last couple of things with the landowner. The total projected cost for the project is $11,224,127. The first task order was just shy of $107,000. Again, that was to do the PER report. The task order budget for, I'm sorry, task order number two budget was just shy of $32,000. And this, to complete the PSNE packages, again, that's $750,000. Design will begin with survey as soon as the work authorization, the task order assuming approval. It will go through about May of 2024, so a little bit less than a year from now. And if things go smoothly, we'll see if we can shave some time off of that. And then when the design is done sometime early in 2024, the project will go to construction. And, and that's it in a nutshell. I, I'm happy to answer any questions that you folks might have.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Cantalupo? Mayor Protem.
So pretty much what we're saying is it's, obviously it's, it's be just a brand new road.
Yes, sir.
And so we didn't, we don't really need to worry right off the bat about any kind of reconstruction or items like that. It'd be just a straight, straight shot. And this would also go all the way to the Public Safety Center, correct?
It's, it's the, it's that entire missing piece.
Okay. So if we approve this now, we might be starting looking at construction actually next year in June.
Early next year. And it's our job and RPS's job to see if, you know, if we can at least keep pace with that schedule, if not save some time.
Well, that's good. Okay. With that, Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve agenda item number 23.
Second.
Our motion by Mayor Protem, seconded by Councilmember Parsley that we approve agenda item number 23. Is there discussion on the motion?
I just have a quick question, just to make sure that I understand. So usually when you have task orders, number threes, because I was going through all of them, that's like design, preliminary design and engineering of the roads. So once we approve this task order, we won't see anything about colors crossing probably until a year from now where the design should be completed, correct?
This is for Marketplace?
Marketplace. I'm so sorry, Marketplace.
So, right. We've bypassed, Councilmember, we've bypassed one whole stage with this, which is the schematic development. So PSNE is also known as final design.
Okay.
Barring anything unusual that comes up that would require us to add scope. So if they find something in the field that's unusual, no, we shouldn't be back other than to, to report good news that we're moving at or ahead of schedule.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. And this road will eventually, when we get this completed, it'll be another artery that will be able to be able to use for residents, be used for a marketplace to colors on that item. So that's another new road.
The only thing that would probably come back would be any kind of agreements that contemplate right-of-way. So, you know, that we don't yet own the right-of-way. So whenever the time comes for that right-of-way. to be transferred from the landowner to the city, we'll have to deal with that. But that won't necessarily be engineering contract, it's just a right-of-way agreement.
Yes, sir.
But that's part of what we've been discussing with the, with the developer there, is to make sure that as we put this agreement in place, that those terms are favorable and fair to the city. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right. Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next two items were postponed at our last meeting. Agenda Item Number Twenty Four, Consideration and Approval of a Resolution of the City Council of the City of Kyle, Texas, Accepting a Petition for the Creation of the Word Place Public Improvement District, Setting a Public Hearing Under Section 372.009 of the Texas Local Government Code on the Advizability of the Creation of the Word Place Public Improvement District within the City of Kyle, Texas. And Agenda Item Number Twenty Five, Consideration and Approval of a Resolution of the City Council of the City of Kyle, Texas, Approving and Authorizing the Execution of a Professional Services Agreement between the city and the developer of the Word Place Pid and Resolving Matters. Ms. Libby.
Good afternoon. Urgent Mayor Councilmember Stephanie Libby with Norton Rose Fulbright. I serve as bond counsel for the city. Both of these action items, as the mayor had indicated, are related to the Word Place Public Improvement District. This is a district that a developer has requested be created within the city of Kyle. He has submitted a petition, and the resolution tonight would accept that petition, call a public hearing. The public hearing would be held as to the advisability for the creation of the district that is scheduled to occur on July sixth, and that has been timed, so that would occur in connection with some zoning changes that need to occur for this development as well. For the professional services agreement, that's in essence a deposit agreement that the developer would enter into with the city. Under that agreement, the developer would make an initial deposit of funds and then agree to continue to replenish those funds as necessary. Amounts undue to the agreement can be withdrawn by the city to pay for any professional fees, costs, or expenses associated with the negotiation of development agreements. The legal work that our firm does, financial advisory services, that's done by Sam Cohen behalf of the city, and then also pit administration by P3, all of those expenses would be covered by the developer under this agreement until we got to the point of a bond issuance. So happy to answer any questions that council may have. I do ask, to the extent that there are development-specific questions that either need to be addressed or asked, that those types of issues be taken into executive session so that we can discuss them from a developmental aspect, but anything related to the Public Improvement District to the documents set up before council tonight, I'm happy to answer.
All right. Thank you. I think the main thing that was brought up the last time was making sure that as we're coming forward with this proposal, that everything is going to be synced up, so that when council has the question before it about the proposal, there won't be any lagging issues. But as I understand it, these two items really just allow for the financial mechanism to come into place whereby the developer can pay for bringing those documents to bear. So everything is now in sync.
The, the action item that's before council tonight allows us to be in sync at that July sixth meeting. And so at the July sixth meeting, there will be a zoning request on that agenda. There also will be the development agreement related to the development on the agreement along with, along with a resolution to actually create the Public Improvement District. The deposit agreement is on the agenda tonight, so that that initial deposit can be paid, since costs will start to incur as the working group starts to work on the financing.
Anybody have any questions for Ms. Libby? Councilmember Floriscale.
I, I have several questions, but upon the request to go into executive, I think they might be best asked there.
Okay. Does anybody have any objection to going into executive session? All right. We're going to be going into executive session. We'll be back. All this meeting back to order. It's eight fourteen PM. There was no action taken during executive session. There was no action taken during executive session. There will be no action taken now. As a reminder, we're considering Agenda Items Number Twenty Four and Twenty Five.
Second.
All right. Motion by Councilmember Zuniga, seconded by Councilmember Floriscale, who approve Agenda Items Twenty Four and Twenty Five. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right. Motion carries seven to zero. All right. Next up is Agenda Items Number Twenty Six and Twenty Seven together. Consideration and Approval of a Resolution of the City of Kyle, Texas, Determining the Costs of Certain Authorized Improvements to Be Financed Within Improvement Area Number One and the remainder of the Limestone Creek Public Improvement District. And Agenda Item Twenty Seven, Consideration and Approval of a Resolution of the City of Kyle, Texas, Approving the Form and Authorizing Distribution of a Preliminary Limited Offering Memorandum for the City of Kyle, Texas, Special Assessment Revenue Bonds for Limestone Creek Public Improvement Area Number One. Ms. Libby.
Mayor and City Councilmember Stephanie Libby with Norton Rose Fulbright. These two action items, as the mayor indicated, relate to Limestone Creek Public Improvement District. We have a brief presentation for you all tonight, just to walk from a very high-level overview of the development for what we're calling Improvement Area Number One. So on the slide here, you'll see just the proposed boundary map for the district itself. Limestone Creek does have TERS associated with this. This boundary map excludes what is the commercial portion of the TERS, and so the pit encompasses only the residential section of that, and that's what's shown on this map. Meritage is developing what we call Improvement Area One as the first improvement area, and so the next presentations show the final plot approvals for what is Improvement Area One. Behind the dot back up for the resolution that approves the Preliminary Service and Assessment Plan, these next slides are excerpts from that Preliminary Service and Assessment Plan. On this slide, you can see the list of authorized improvements, costs, the amounts that are attributable to this Improvement Area Number One. They do have some infrastructure, which we term as major infrastructure. That infrastructure goes into the ground nail and will be reimbursed to the developer as additional improvement areas come online in the future. For Improvement Area One, there will be an assessment that's placed on the property within that area of the district. It's proposed that the assessment be an amount of $15,825,000. That's the amount that's on the preliminary assessment rule. We will provide notice of the assessment to the landowners before our next council meeting and have a public hearing before that assessment's levied. For the final slide, we walk through the sources and uses associated with the financing. In this schedule, you can see the amount of public improvements that are going to be funded by this initial bond. The next line item, which we call Improvement Area Number One, Reimbursement Obligation, that's a reimbursement agreement that's entered into by the city and the developer. For this development, they'll have a three-to-one lien to value. The $15 million assessment levy that'll be in place doesn't meet that three-to-one, and so for this pit, we'll do what we call a AB financing. The A series of bonds will be issued this year at that three-to-one lien to value. At some point in the future, when three-to-one value can support a bond issuance for the entire $15 million assessment levy, a B series of bonds will be issued. Until that time, this reimbursement agreement between the city and developer will be in place, and amounts owed to the developer can be repaid under that agreement. Happy to answer any questions that you all have about the Preliminary Service and Assessment Plan. For the action item for number twenty-seven, that's just the offering document that'll be approved in connection with this financing, and so FMS has been retained as underwriter for the Limestone Creek 2023 bonds. They'll use that offering document to go out and solicit interest from investors in that bond, and this, the approval of that resolution just indicates that city staff and its consultants, including our firm as bond counsel, Sam Cohen as financial advisor, and P3 have all worked together to put that document together and verify the accuracy of the information that's being provided.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Libby. Does anybody have any questions?
Are we discussing Agenda Item Twenty-Eight, or is it just Twenty-Six?
Just Twenty-Six. Twenty-eight and Twenty-Nine are next.
Okay.
Motions?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Item Twenty-Six.
And Twenty-Seven?
Second.
And Twenty-Seven.
All right. The motion's made by Councilmember Parsley to approve Agenda Items Twenty-Six and Twenty-Seven, seconded by Councilmember Zuniga. Is there discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Nay.
All right. Motion carries six to one. All right. Next up, we're going to bring up together the deposit, Agenda Items Twenty-Eight and Twenty-Nine. Discussion and possible action to approve a deposit agreement between the City of Kyle and Meritage Homes LLC related to the Limestone Creek development and a Task Order Number Two to State Side Right-of-Way Services LLC Arlington, Texas, in an amount not to exceed $131,480 for acquisition of right-of-way for the South Go Fourth Road project. Funding to be provided for are fully funded in advance by the developer. Ms. Smites.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Amber Smites, Assistant City Manager for the record. The first item is a deposit agreement between Meritage Homes and the city. This agreement allows Meritage to provide upfront funding costs for the administration costs that we're going to incur for the eminent domain fees, relocation fees, and acquisition costs related to constructing the off-site portion of Go Fourth Road. The developer will deposit $135,000 that, within twenty business days, that will fully fund State Side's contract, which is the next item up for your consideration, and then it will also fund the small amount of survey that goes along with doing the property acquisition. And then they will deposit additional funds as we need. Any questions?
All right. Does anybody have any questions? Councilmember Parsley.
Have we contacted the property owners of the properties that will be condemned?
Yes, ma'am. We have sent introductory letters in both English and Spanish, in both certified and return receipt, and then also via regular mail. Our next step is to hopefully get this contract underway with State Side. We would work with their interpreter, and we want to make phone calls, personal phone calls, to set up the initial visits with the property owners.
Do we know if there is one property owner, or there are several property owners on that area?
There are five property owners. One property owner, and maybe Leah can help me remember, well, six property owners, but one property owner owns two properties, and there are two businesses. So one of the, one of the businesses is considered a business because it owns the, owns another property and it rents it out. So one of the properties is a rental income property, so that will be part of the negotiations that will come before you.
Have they reached out to the city?
I have not been contacted by the property owners, no, ma'am.
Councilmember Floriscale.
Thank you. Who came up with $135,000?
That was, that incorporates the entirety of State Side's contract, which is just over $131,000, and then it's $3,500 to do the survey, because of the $3,500 amount is budgeted for and below the city manager's authorized $15,000 purchasing requirement. That does not require to go to council, so it covers those two, and I think it's just a nice round number, so that's why we got there.
And my concern is it's going to go towards the sole purpose of making payments for off-site Go Fourth City expenses that may have been incurred by the city in accordance with this agreement. So we know for sure that there are six homes being affected. $135,000 is...
Correct.
And I don't think it's going to, I don't think this is going to be all that we see, but I, I think if, if I was going to try to go show good face, I would not only give the city $135,000. We know it's going to be quite a bit more than that, just, just for the houses alone. So I'm kind of disappointed that that wasn't a higher amount, because even if they gave us $135,000 for all six of the houses, that's only $810,000, which is not nearly enough.
Sure. So what, the property acquisition and the relocation costs will come back. We will get more money. That will all be negotiated by y'all, and it will come back to y'all, and we will get more money from the developer for that aspect. This fully funds the contract for State Side services, so they're our agent. They're going to be acting as, on behalf of, of the city of Kyle, they're going to meet with each property owner, they're going to go through the appraisal process with each property owner, they're going to figure out the relocation costs to move them into their new location, they're going to figure out the cost to relocate their business, the cost that, you know, that they might have lost doing their business. All of those costs are not included in this initial $135,000, and it will be brought back to y'all, and it, we will be going back to the developer to ask them to pay for that funding.
So the $135 is only for the third-party company to work with the residents?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Still think it needs to be higher?
Yes, I do. We got, kindness is not cheap.
Any other questions?
Where are y'all getting the $135? Is it $131?
Section Two, under recitals.
Okay. Yeah, because I'm looking at the fees, six parcels, residential, $28,800, added another $48,16, business landlord. When I look at the rights, about $24,000 for residential, city documents, $4,480. City council meetings, $700, explanation of relocation, $4,200 for the six parcels, and the condemnation for residential of $2,003, which is $6,000. So, like, I guess the thing is, is that, yes, where do these, where do we get the value of these numbers? Is it, is it just their fees? Or is it just, this is what we seem valued for their, for this area?
It is not the value for the property or the area. It is the fees that State Side is charging the city to perform the, all the services to discuss with the property owners about their property, and then to start those negotiations, to get the appraisals done, to get every, all of that. They are going to be that city's agent, so that's the $131,000.
So we need to, so we would vote to pay them $131,000 to start negotiations with the homeowners, correct?
Correct. And it fully funds State Side's contract, so we, I don't imagine we would be back to y'all to ask for more money for State Side, but we will be back to talk about negotiations for the property acquisition and the relocation of those homeowners and tenants and those businesses. And the developer will be funding those costs.
So Amber, on that task order number two, though, the scope of services and deliverables, it does say relocation for eight displaces.
Right. It's the administration, the administrative services that they will, they will be performing. So I guess can kind of compare it to, you know, they're a realtor acting on our behalf. I guess maybe is the best way to compare it to, so we would be paying them. Of course, we are going to be closely involved in that process. We're going to be personally involved. I will be involved. But they're going to lead us through and make sure we're meeting all of our federal and state requirements regarding the laws around acquisition and relocation.
Okay. So not a physical relocation, only the...
Right. So the physical part, the, the payment of the property, the actual moving of the folks, those expenses will come to you later, and we will be asking for more money from the developer to pay for those at a later date.
Okay.
And can you tell me where that, where they state that? Because right now, it just says, as Councilmember Zuniga said, it talk, it doesn't say administrative cost, it just says cost of relocation.
Right. So they just, they call it relocation... So, they just, they call it relocation services. So, they're going to be our agent. They're going, right. They're going to act on our behalf. They're going to perform those services when it comes to actual payment for the property, payment to relocate them, payment for the businesses. Those are additional costs that y'all will be a part of negotiating, and we will go back to the developer to ask for those funds. So, State Side's not involved where the ci, they do, they're not involved where the city is going to get their money for that. So, our relationship with State Side is they're just going to act as our agent.
Okay, yeah. I was just wondering where we could see that at, like, where would they say that?
Number seven does say agent, relocation agent.
Correct.
Inspect the proposed acquisition sites. So, there's bullet points on that, on the page six.
If I could just follow up, Amber, how can we guarantee that the developer is going to assist us with this? They could come back and say, sorry, it's not our problem. It's y'all's. So, how can we guarantee that the developer or the home builder will assist us going forward? Because they could come back, like I said, sorry, you know, this is y'all's problem. Y'all agreed to this deal. You guys figure it out.
Correct.
And again, with the $131,000, it's, you know, we're coming up with it, my opinion, it should be from the developer itself because they're the ones making the money off of these homes. They're the ones that are selling their product. They're the ones that's going to be profiting off of this. So, that's, that's where the concern is.
So, the development agreement dictates that the developer must provide funds to cover the cost of the properties that I'm talking about will come at a later date within three days. So, we'll have the money to purchase those properties and relocate those folks within three days right away.
And when do we do the negotiation of the price for the properties?
It will start once we set up those initial appointments. We're going to introduce everybody to the team. It will be several meetings. We'll have several meetings with the folks. Just because it's a very emotional process, you know, we'll get them introduced to us. We'll get them introduced to the concept, but we'll start that right away, as soon as this contract is executed and approved by the city council.
Additional questions? Comments? So, I just would say that I see this, you know, I've been hearing from the council, you know, for a good while now, that we want to make sure that we're, you know, that we're not cutting corners and that we're fully engaging these property owners, and this is the contract that makes that happen. So, I understand there may be confusion about what we're accomplishing here, but we are hiring agents to go out and assist us in this process to make sure that we are communicating fully and completely with the property owners. So, this is the step that is next in the series of steps that perfects the development agreement that we already have in place that funds this road. So, it's a, it's an important step for us to take. I know that it's not necessarily fun or full of levity, but it is, it is a necessary step to continue moving forward with the plans and the agreements that we already have in place and have already approved.
Who represents the property owners legally?
The property owners.
Themselves.
I can answer that question. Page sign, City Attorney for the record. The property owners, if they want to retain an attorney, if they want to be represented by legal counsel, they have to retain their own attorney.
And who will be paying for those fees?
The property owner pays for that. If there's a way to recover those expenses through the condemnation process, I don't have the answer to that question. I can follow up with you. But generally speaking, if there's a negotiated settlement with parties agreeing to a purchase price, then all that the city is paying is the purchase price for the, for the land plus any relocation expenses. There's not typically attorney's fees involved in that because that's not, it's a bit above and beyond what the city is acquiring through that process.
How do we know that they feel that it was a fair price, what they're getting? That's what I would like to know. I don't, I don't know who's representing them, and I want to make sure that if we're not going to be involved in those negotiations, that we know that they, they have settled with a fair price. That's...
So, Councilmember Parsley, the, there's a process, and the first part of the process is that the city has to engage in good faith negotiations with the property owners. Any appraisals that are conducted on the property have to be presented to the property owner so that they have all the information that the city has that establishes what the value of the property is, so that they are able to negotiate from a place of understanding of what, what is the value of the property, at least from the city's perspective. If they are able to reach an agreement through that process, it's, they're not required to enter into an agreement with the city at that time. They're not required to agree to purchase the property, for the city to purchase the property during that process. If they do not, the next step is to go to a commissioner's court hearing, and that's three disinterested landowners, listen to the city, present information about the value of the property, and the property owner has an opportunity to do the same. And those three disinterested landowners make a decision about what the purchase price is.
Which is appealable.
Is there any way that we can at least let them know that they have a, like, a right to an attorney? And, you know, if they feel like they can't make this decision, that it's probably in their best interest to obtain an attorney? I mean, I know we can't give them legal advice, but some people may not understand that it's in their best interest to go find an attorney. And a lot of those attorneys, and we don't have to tell them this, but just for our own knowledge, a lot of those attorneys work on contingencies, and so they don't necessarily have to be paid upfront, but at least I'll feel better about them having proper representation.
We could work with the right-of-way consultant to provide that information.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Items 28 and 29. Motion by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Zuniga. Is there discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye. Aye? All opposed? Nay? Roll call vote.
Aye.
Flores-Kale?
Nay.
Heiser?
Aye.
Parsley?
Nay.
Bradshaw?
Aye.
Tobias?
Nay.
Mitchell?
Aye. Motion carries four to three. All right, next up is Agenda Item Number 30. Authorize the Chief of Police to execute a two-year agreement with Flot Group Inc., Atlanta, Georgia, for the purpose of providing an automated license plate reader system, including 15 cameras, in an amount not to exceed $50,000 per year, for a total cost, total cost of no more than $100,000 over the two-year period. We had a presentation on this before, so I don't know that we have to necessarily go through it again.
Mayor?
Mayor Protem.
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve item, Agenda Item Number 30.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Protem, seconded by Councilmember Flores-Kale. Is there discussion on the motion? Councilmember Heiser?
Is there any way that we can be updated on some of the data in terms of the progress of how PD is executing the use of these cameras? Just so we can get a sense of if, is it working? Is it not working for us? I know it works in other areas. I've gotten some feedback from some surrounding cities of their experience.
The question is, can we get, can we get updates on how the LPRs are being put into place on a regular basis?
From the city? I'm not talking like case information. I'm just, you know, overall, like, hits that are being picked up, or just how we're utilizing this unit.
Once we get the, my, I guess my feedback on that would be, once we get the Oversight Committee going, that would be probably something along with the yearly or bi-quarterly report that's going to be requested when that comes around because of, or unless what you're saying is, could we get other feedback from other cities on how they're being utilized? Or is it just...
No, I have a little bit of that. I would just like to know, you know, how we're utilizing it, not to say we're utilizing it wrong, but to say, like, is this worth the investment in the future? As we look to possibly utilize technology more in other ways.
Yes, because this is a two-year agreement. If approved.
I wanted to actually piggyback on that and say, I do think that it's important that we have a pretty substantial public relations outreach to make sure the community is informed that we're putting these cameras up on certain streets.
Okay. We'll be glad to do that and get some kind of periodic reporting that we can bring back to the full council. Absolutely.
All right, any other discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? Nay. Motion carries six to one. Next up, Agenda Item Number 31. Consider approval of an interlocal agreement with Capillary Council of Governments, Emergency Communications District for relocation of the Kyle Emergency Dispatch Center, Public Safety Answering Point, PSAP, or PSPA, and related costs not to exceed $178,000.
Chief Barnett? Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jeff Barnett, Chief of Police for the record. The item that you have before you tonight is an item with our local council of governments. Our local council of governments oversees the 911 program for our region. Inasmuch, we are partnered with them to bring back the PSAP, the 911 Answering Point here to the City of Kyle and our new Public Safety Center. Many months ago, we had a, just a very quick estimate. They had not had a chance to put a pencil to paper yet, and you may recall that we had a temporary placeholder of $500,000 to do the services that are under review tonight. So, with this ILA with CapCOG, we will be spending $178,000, much lower than the temporary placeholder of the $500,000, for two purposes. Number one, that will establish fiber connectivity to the dispatch center to operate the 911 system. And second to that, it will provide for the UPS, the battery backup to the 911 system that's required by CapCOG, for a total of a one-time fee of $178,000.
I'd like to make a motion to approve. Second. Motion by the mayor, seconded by Mayor Protem. Then we approve Agenda Item 31. Is there discussion on the motion? Councilmember Flores-Kale?
Thank you. There are two edits that they were going to make. Do you know if those edits were made?
Yes, ma'am. They did provide an updated document, and they said that if council noted anything that was just simply a scribbler's error, typographical in nature, that we could make those corrections prior to final signature.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, Agenda Item Number 32. This item was postponed in May. An ordinance of the City of Kyle, Texas, amending Chapter Eight, Article Two, Section Eight Thirty of the Code of Ordinances to change minimum street widths from 20 feet to 24 feet, providing an effective date, et cetera. Ms. Schmice?
Good evening. Amber Schmice, Assistant City Manager for the record. Again, it was approved, directed staff to bring back an ordinance to amend the fire lane from 20 feet to 24 feet. We brought back the amended ordinance for your consideration at the last meeting, and it was tabled. And so, we are bringing it back to you for your consideration per your direction. I just wanted to add a note, if you approve the draft ordinance before you tonight, city staff will need to review all zoning regulations, development standards, and subdivision regulations to ensure that the amendment does not create any conflicts within our city's code.
Shouldn't we do that first? Well, that would be my question to the city council, is that we should do that first. As has been noted by Mr. Langley, the desire for us in terms of making especially serious decisions is that we should make those decisions after staff has had an opportunity to provide a thorough review and explanation of the effects of such a decision. Increasing the infrastructure within a subdivision by 20% is a major decision, and so I, we're also in the process of creating a comprehensive plan. This would have major impacts on that as well. So, I understand there may be desire to make this change, but it sure would be nice to have more than just one anecdote from the council and then just a vote. I would love to have some review and so that we can know that we're making a good decision if we're, if we're making it. So, but I'm not sure that any of us live on streets that are compliant with our current international fire code. So, the majority of the streets that, that we live on are smaller than what we currently allow. So, only the most recent subdivisions, where we've been putting in stop signs frequently, are actually compliant. And so, we need to, we need to take a look. So, that is my request, is that we table this item for now. We can discuss it as we're going through our comprehensive planning process, and also give, if we choose, give staff direction to take a look at our streets' planning master plan, to make sure that our streets' widths are sufficient for fire travel, but also from a sound planning perspective. We need all those voices. So, Councilmember Flores-Kale?
I think in theory, that's a great idea, and there were several times that I know I've requested for us to take into consideration the comprehensive plan, which we're working on. For example, when we voted for the node. And ultimately, my thought is, if we're going to do that for one, we should do it for all. And since it doesn't go that way, I lean more towards honoring our vote. And so, we all took a previous vote of a yes to pass this. And so, I feel like if the comprehensive plan wants to go back and change it, they can, but as of now, my vote stays the same. I think it's a good idea. I see the difference between narrow versus bigger streets, and I appreciate the various streets, especially for those kids who have to walk in them. So, although I think what you said has some validity to it, since we're not really consistent with it, that we continue to honor our votes that we previously took, I'm not opposed to tabling it, but I do feel like a lot of times, as a council, we don't move forward with our yes votes, and it gets hung up on something that we go back and change. So, I'd like to keep it consistent.
Councilwoman Zuniga?
Yeah, I also would like more information about how the width of the road affects the park fees. I spoke with the council member that told me that there's an inverse relationship where developer has a narrower road, more density, but there's an inverse relationship to the park fees, park donated fees. So, I'd like to know that.
Jason, correct me if I'm wrong, but our parkland dedication fees are based on per unit.
Right.
And so, if they, if the, if the unit, the plan unit development is more dense, we would get more parkland dedication fees. Now, I do want to clarify, tonight, you are considering a fire lane change width. And I think in, it's been kind of, I'm missing the word for it, but used interchangeably fire lane and street width. And so, right now, before you, for your consideration, is fire lane. And that has a considerable difference in the width of our roads on our fire routes, not necessarily through our streets. And Leon, did I, okay.
Councilmember Parsley?
So, okay, so, we are not doing the ordinance to change the fire, the width of the fire code, correct?
It's the fire code that's in front of you. So, the fire lane is in front of you tonight, not street widths. So, of course, the fire lane...
Hang on. Please hang on, because those are directly correlated. If you increase the minimum unobstructed lane width from 20 feet to 24 feet, it increases the total width that is required to have two vehicle, vehicles parked from, from 32 feet to 36 feet wide is the, is the width of the streets. So, it's less dense, and it increases infrastructure costs proportionally. So, there's, and that's just one component of the ramifications. Increased infrastructure costs, reduced value per home, so less homes have to carry higher costs. And you also have other issues with regards to traffic flow, connectivity, and that's less resources that you can put into a development for parkland improvements and other things. And so, there's just, there's a lot, and we need the chance to actually go through and have a conversation with professionals to, so that we can make an informed decision about this.
So, I do agree that, you know, I saw a problem, and I see it every day. The streets in my, and I know my street is just a different case, but there is no parking zone all across the road because of the fire lane, the fire trucks not being able to go through. And so, right now, it just happened last week, Councilmember Heiser came by my house, parked in front of my house, and within an hour and a half, his car wasn't there. And I know this is going to happen everywhere, so...
Wow. Gosh. For the record...
The thing is, I don't know... The thing is, I don't know how to address it. After we took that vote, there are other things that I was looking into. I have a neighbor in a very narrow street that is asking for speed bumps because people speed. Which brings me to the point that Mayor Mitchell has been doing about, you know, the wider the road, the more people are going to speed. So what is it? I really don't know what the happy medium is. The other thing that I think that we didn't take into consideration is maybe the maintenance of the roads, the wider they are, the more that, you know, it's going to cost the city to maintain these roads. I don't know if the right way to do this is maybe doing an analysis of the roads that kind of goes with the comprehensive plan to find the happy medium. I, I don't know exactly what the best way to do this is.
My recommendation is to bring you back some details about this, all the ramifications, so you understand cost, you understand the park fees, you understand the safety, all of those things together. And then you can make an educated decision of where you want to be on that continuum. But I, I think, just given the discussion, some of the things we've talked about staff in the first week or so that I've been here, I think we need to give you some more information so you can make a better decision. And we can certainly research that, bring you back, you know, a coherent discussion of that in a work session and see where you land, see what you want to do.
And, and that's why I wanted to table it last time, is I wanted, you know, to have Brian Preston to see his, to get his feedback on this item.
Would you like to, I mean, we could give direction to staff to bring that
I don't know if you can put a motion together with everything I just said, or anything you want to add.
Bring back
Yes, to bring back some information.
To make sure it's clear that we do want to have a discussion, you know.
So I think the direction, the direction for, for staff would be to research this issue, bring you back a comprehensive discussion and options of how to proceed? Is that what you're asking?
Yes, that's, that would be.
You got it.
Do I need to make a motion for that?
You want it? Go for it.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to direct staff to look into options to research the issue of the fire code and the street width and the fire lanes and bring back information for us to make an informed decision.
Motion by Councilor Parsley, seconded by Councilor Flor scale, that we direct staff to bring back information related to the street widths. As we've discussed, is there discussion on that motion?
Yep.
Mayor Protim.
Real quick, I mean, I get it, Mayor, when you were saying that you advocated for this back in 2017, but that was like when you had like, what, 30,000 people? You know, now we're going on 60,000. Yes, there are concerns about people who are speeding when we widen the streets. Then again, there's also the concern, like, somebody who's been measuring their streets in their neighborhood, and it's twenty, literally, some of it's 23, some of it's 24, some of it's 21. It's just, you know, and then you can't get the cars through because you've got cars that are parked on the side. Same issue we're having at South Lake Ranch because the roads are so narrow. But if we can get some analysis going forward, so we can see as new developments coming around, we can say, okay, look, this is where we're at. And again, people's, cars are getting bigger, you know? And so I think there's just data itself.
Yeah, the data is helpful, and it's, it's really important to understand that in order to be compliant with the code that's currently on the books and have parking on both sides of the street, a, a street must be thirty-two feet wide. That's six feet on each side plus 20 feet unobstructed. So if you have a street that's 23 feet wide, according to our current code, it should be no parking on either side, which is not an issue for fire trucks. The, same for the peninsula. It's 20 feet wide and it's no parking. If no one parks there and if they follow the law, it sounds like it's being enforced now. You may have helped bring that awareness. If it's being enforced now, I promise you, the fire trucks with 20 feet unobstructed have no problems.
I measured mine, mine's 24.
I have measured mine too.
It's 24, so, so if we, if we go to, if we go to 24 feet unobstructed is required, how can we justify allowing for streets that are 23 feet wide, in some cases, or 24 feet wide, to go ahead and have two parking on both sides of the street? That is a fire hazard. The solution is to put red stripe in South Lake Ranch and to tell those folks to stop parking on the street and tow them when they do. But that takes a little bit more political courage to do that than it does to make this vote.
That was brought up, yes.
So that's
It's a very tough situation. I know if you have seen the Facebook post, the peninsula has gotten cars towed like three or four per day.
I'm sure the chief is happy.
They're banking. The rest is, so.
All right, any further discussion? All who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. All right, six to zero. Next up is agenda item number twenty-three, approval of a resolution authorizing the city manager to make arrangements and associated expenditures for the visioning workshop scheduled for June 24th and 25th.
So, thank you, Mayor and Council. We had a workshop on May 13th to talk about the budget. And as part of that, the council wanted to come back and have a visioning workshop in late June to talk about specifically CIP projects and how to prioritize some of those moving forward into the budget process. We asked Amber to put together a short presentation for you on some options that we've identified. I think you had some options that you identified earlier in the year. And we've also come up with a few others, and we're looking for direction today of, of where you'd like to have this visioning workshop and so we can make the final arrangements for that. So Amber, thank you.
Good evening. So just as a reminder to the city council, in December, staff presented McKinney, El Paso, Brownsville, and Sugar Land as possible locations. The council voted to select El Paso and then subsequently voted to wait until we placed our new city manager. And so tonight, you could also consider these four cities again. We still believe that they could be a dynamic example of what we might want to go look for, Kyle, to, to aspire to be. In addition to those, we have Prosper, Texas. Prosper is about 45 minutes north of downtown Dallas. It's a growing community. Right now, it's about 34,000 people. Given a, you know, focus on the downtown, they have a downtown Prosper, which is a revitalization downtown program. And they have events in their downtown to help activate the downtown space. Their development patterns are similar to Kyle, primarily suburban, but they do have some mixed-use development in key locations. And then their key attributes are the location, their development patterns. But just to note, if we pick Prosper, they don't have a hotel there. So we're going to have to stay in other cities. I'm out. I'm out.
What about Burleson?
What about Bonding?
We could go to Burleson. They, in, in the other communities, we looked for facilities that the council has expressed interest in exploring for Kyle. And so they have the library, they have parks, they have these cool athletic fields, and then they have 52 miles of hike and bike trails, similar to what we've got planned for our vibe trail and our other natural trails. Mixed-use developments, they have a west side, and they just landed a Costco, so pretty cool for them. And then they're going to have a hotel and multifamily development. So all of that is planned still. And then they have the gates of Prosper, that's 800 acres, primarily horizontal mixed-use, but some multifamily, single-family, retail and restaurants, planned developments. Next up is Addison, also in North Texas, 20 minutes north of downtown Dallas. They're approximately 17,000 in population, and they are landlocked. So they have no ability to grow beyond their current city limits. Their development patterns are a mix of urban and suburban styles. They have mixed-use developments, and then their key attributes are location and development patterns. City facilities, they have an athletic club, a sports court, and that's pretty cool. The picture down on the bottom shows, shows that club. Parks and trails, and then their library, they're actually part of the Dallas Public Library system. So that'd be a little bit different than what, what we have here in Kyle. Mixed-use development, here's a couple of examples. Addison Circle has 124 acres of retail and restaurants, residential, parks and open spaces. And then Addison Cotton Belt is planned. Oh, this, sorry, Addison Circle, this is actually a picture of a concert they had there. So this is actually on the ground and kind of a cool area. And then Addison Cotton Belt, they have 18 acres, office buildings, retail and restaurant, multifamily and open space plant. Next up, Georgetown, Texas. It's 30 minutes north of downtown Austin. Right now, they're about 75,000 people. They also have a very, very robust downtown, and so we could look, look at that when we were there. They are, they, they are slowly venturing into urban, urban development. They have some mixed-use developments in key locations. And then their attributes are location, of course, close to downtown Austin. Their development patterns, and then their main street and historic downtown are very attractive to us to go look at. Their city facilities, they have a recreation center, a community center, parks and trails, indoor and outdoor pools, splash pads, and a public library. Here's mixed-use developments, the Commons at Riveri, which is very cool, retail and restaurants, multifamily, office buildings. And then they have a planned mixed-use development, planned development, 454 acres called Parmer Ranch. It'll have retail and restaurants, single-family, medical space, multifamily, schools, hike and bike trails, and open space. And also, there is the option of Kyle or any other options or combinations thereof.
What do you, what do you want to do?
I like Addison, I like downtown Prosper. Are they like driveable distance?
Yeah, one, one of, one of the things I would tell you, if, if you want to be in the North Dallas area, we could find a location where we could get some meeting space and a hotel, and you could probably see both Prosper and Addison. They're probably about 20, 20 minutes apart. Or the tollway, I know both of the city managers well. I could probably have some of their department staff available to maybe answer some questions, brief us on some projects, just as an option for you.
I think that Prosper has the downtown development that probably I would love to see.
Okay.
This, that's just my personal opinion, but I also like Addison and how they're developing. I like that, the lakes they have and the Christmas lights, which is, I know it's not Christmas, but anyway.
I like, I like Addison, I'm sorry.
Nope.
I like Addison most, but I would also like to see Prosper as well.
How close are the two towns?
It's probably about 20 minutes away.
We can probably stay in Addison and drive to Prosper.
Prosper has no hotels, so we can
But we can stay in Addison.
We can stay in Addison, go up there and back.
I think Addison might be a little closer to a town that, you know, has more to, for us to model off.
Yeah, definitely the mixed-use, all the vertical mixed-use developments. I think you're very impressive, and I think it could be good models for us for some of the things you're looking to do.
So any objections on Addison? All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve and direct the city manager to make arrangements and associated expenditures for the visioning workshop to be held in Addison.
Second.
Motion by Mayor, seconded by Councilor Parsley, is there discussion on the motion?
Is this to view both, though? Because I like strategically looking at it.
Going to, you think that we could
If there are, if it's doable, if it's not.
You'd want to, you'd want to have a, a plan where you try to get Prosper in there as well, take a trip to Prosper, look at the downtown area, as well as Addison. Yes, sir, I think we can probably do both. I'll, I'll work on, see if we can put together the logistics of that.
If, if we can. Because I know for me, when I go to these workshops, I know we've got a lot to discuss.
Right.
And we've, we've had in the past where we go places where we get just a little bit behind on tours, lunches, and things like that. I think the last time we did that, we started our workshop almost close to mid-afternoon.
Yep.
And so I, I'd like to be able to see a city or, or two or something, but still stay focused on why we're going and try to get as much work as we can while we're there, if as much as possible. If we can do, if we can do both, great. But I, I know that would be the one goal that I know we, we've had before, where we'd be running late in the evening when we're still trying to finish up discussion.
I think our plan would be if, if you wanted to try to hit both sites, is that maybe that Friday afternoon, we try to make a trip to Prosper, look at the downtown area, have some of that discussion, come back, see the Addison site either on Friday or early Saturday. And then the majority of the Saturday would then be for the discussions and the priority setting, and probably some on Sunday as well. So maybe a nine to noon, nine to one, something like that on a Sunday. That way, we'd have time to get back after the weekend. Just a preliminary schedule. We can put together something, pencil something out for you. We don't have a lot of time, so we'll have to work hard to get this done in about three weeks.
So do we know a date as well?
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth.
Yeah. Councilor Brett Show.
We originally talked about extending it by a day. Would anybody be open to that, to make sure that we can cover all the ground and accomplish everything we want to in the workshop?
So that'd be the 23rd through the 25th?
Yeah, so that was, I mean, I assume if we, we want to make sure that we start on the 25th first thing, which means that we're probably going to want to get up there that Friday. And so we could have maybe an excursion that Friday evening to, you know, to Prosper. So it'd be all day Saturday, half-day Sunday, but that we could come up, you know, and maybe get there, you know, Friday as early as folks want to get there. But, and maybe have a
What about, what about going on Thursday evening and touring on Friday?
I cannot do that, but I can stay Sunday night.
Well, I think the rule's genuinely been, if we can't all make it, that we just make for days that we can. It's important for all of us to be there. And so if Daniella or somebody else can't make it, I think the Friday, Saturday, Sunday is, will suffice, even though I do understand the importance of an extra day. But the, I think the goal is to keep everybody together, so we plan it out.
Well, I just think incorporating something into the Friday evening, you know, dinner, and maybe even before, if possible, to
I just know, yeah, I just know in my schedule, I would probably, the, the earliest I could leave would be like right after work at two, so.
I will have to leave.
Just like, just like last, just like before.
Is there any option to maybe spend Sunday evening to use all Saturday, all Sunday, and half of Friday?
We're here whenever you need us. We'd be glad to do it, just on your schedule.
Yeah, I guess
Go up Friday.
But that's why I'm saying if we started, if we go Friday at noon and get there like at 2:00, 3:00 PM, and then we use part of Friday, all day Saturday, all day Sunday, and we can come back Monday mid-morning?
I wouldn't be able to do Monday.
I know, okay.
What about Tuesday?
We'll just do what we can.
So Friday, Saturday, Sunday?
So I think the location's good.
Okay. And then the direction would be all of Friday afternoon, Saturday and Sunday schedule?
Friday starting at like
Two?
Six, five, six.
Okay.
Because that's as early as, you know, folks who have to work could probably get there anyway, so.
I think probably the, the plan would be then to visit something in Addison that evening because of traffic and just that location. And maybe on, on Saturday, we could go up, take a look at Prosper, and then spend the rest of the time on, on project prioritization. If that works for everyone.
Yeah, we could start at six in the morning.
Okay. I'll be ready.
I won't. All right, any further discussion? All who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries, seven to zero. Next up is agenda item thirty-four, first reading and ordinance of the city of Kyle, Texas amending the code of ordinances, chapter two, administration amending article three, boards, committees, and commissions, et cetera. Ms. Schmeitz.
It's some much-needed amendments and basically housekeeping to our boards, committees, and commissions ordinances. I, I bullet pointed all of them out for you. I guess the highlights of this is, is removing the portions that overlap the policy and filling the vacancies to include the application process dates of June 1st through August 31st. So that when boards and commission, the policy is updated. So just, just for your reference, the ordinance references the policy. And so right now, the, in the ordinance, it references application process dates of June 1st through August 31st. That's in conflict with the policy. So we need to take that out of the, the ordinance and just reference the policy. And so y'all can make changes to the policies as you see fit, and you won't have to go back and change the ordinance. It provides a better definition to general qualifications, including the residency requirement for the Economic Development and Tourism Board. I think in the past, it had said, just a significant presence. And so this adds a definition behind that, so it'll be easy for staff and, and the committee who are looking through those applications for those board applicants to make that call on whether they qualify for those seats or not. Finally, it cleans up the terms for the Arts and Cultural Commission so that the odd seats expire in odd years and even seats expire, expire in even years, which just happens in all of our other boards and commissions. And right now, as it's set up, we were going to lose five members. And, uh, right now, as it's set up, we were going to lose five members one year and two members the other year. So that's just, that's not a good balance. And finally, it moved the library board from under the library department in the code to the boards and commissions, part of the code. And then some other housekeeping things, so I'm available for any questions y'all might have.
Anybody have any questions? Mayor Protim.
Oh, Mayor Heiser, you can go first.
Councilmember Heiser.
Thank you. Uh, how do we, I, I see here that we're now, um, adding boards and commissions together, but we have the, that, the new commission that we established last year, Arts and Cultural Commission that has its own budget, which seems to operate differently than our boards. How, how are we defining the purpose and responsibilities of that commission in relationship to other boards? Because Colleen is kind of like just a liaison with that commission.
Correct, so this board and commission, just it speaks to all of our boards and commission, the, the ordinance that's, uh, before you tonight. As the Arts and Cultural Commission has its own definition under the code and Arts and Cultural Commission? Go ahead, Jennifer.
The purpose of the boards and commissions ordinance is to streamline certain things that are all the same for all boards and commissions. And then each board or commission also has a section that lays out the specific things to that board or commission.
So if there are things you wish to change about that specific board to bring it more in line, I think a proposal would be appropriate. It's just not in this, it's not in this action. Mayor Protim.
Okay, to give a history on it, um, the Arts Commission we were talking about?
Yeah.
Was, uh, a proposal that was brought up by a task force that we've always had, you know, where three council members came together with an idea of bringing something forward, just like Hero's Memorial, just like the park, just like that. This was a task force and the former librarian was part of that. And so that is kind of why it started to become to where we wanted the, we wanted to bring arts and sculptures and things like that to the city of Kyle. And we as a council voted to say that these guys could get a budget, a specific budget on versus all the other ones. So that's kind of why Ms. Westbrook had brought forth, hey, look, here's the budget that I had. And actually she came under and so forth. So that's where that came into line there. Um, Daniella and Yvonne and I, we went back about a year ago to try to streamline this because it was just very kind of a little bit chaotic on how the process would work and so forth. So I can see when you're bringing this forward, there's needs to be a lot of touch up, a lot of white out, a lot of, hey, we need to just, you know, we've done this for a year and I've done the interviews with you before. And I think you probably did one recently with, uh, Ms. Parsley. So you can kind of see now how the, the, um, assistant city manager with the council member that's assigned to that board and then also the liaison, we can see now how the interviews are going. But you're right, Mr. Mayor, um, you know, this may not be the spot to where we would make recommendations to remove. But yes, I, I do agree on the, the June through August thirty-first. That's just from day one, that was too long of a, of an application procedure. Uh, I, I remember when I was bringing it forward or had the recommendation of having it from June first to maybe mid-July because we're hitting budget season. We're also hitting, um, end of the year vacations and stuff like that. And we always wanted to make sure that we had these boards up, up and running by September first. And it would have been very hard to do it when we stopped taking the applications. Because if we have for almost three months, people lose interest.
Right.
So I, I think it would be best if you look at it to say, okay, by looking at this throughout the whole year, we've received the applications that came in. I think changing the application dates from June first to July first or July fifteenth, uh, I, I would fully support that. So that way we could get the interviews going quickly and have these people not wait three months, two months. And then go on that note right there. Um, I think also making sure that all the, all the boards have a specific go-to person. You know, I think we did before where we had the assistant city manager. These people would report here and some reported Jerry and some reported to James and so forth, so. Um, just, and then of course, I think the Arts and Cultural Commission is one in, that's kind of maybe up in the air. Is this still going to go under the public library or is this going to be its own entity? And I was actually going to maybe suggest adding another committee. If anybody would be that, would be a trails committee referencing the trails, uh, system on that end. As far as like the hike and bike and the vibe.
We have.
You already have one?
We just.
We already have one.
We just, oh, for me.
Oh, okay, so maybe we already have it there, maybe I just lost track. But it'd be something like that is, is kind of where I'm getting at as far as the dates.
So the, before you tonight, the dates just come up as the terms expire. So I think a lot of them are in September. Um, and I can't remember the other, is it March? No, just September. So as those, those vacancies come up in September, the, uh, staff liaison will make a posting, um, on our website. We'll start to take applications, uh, well in advance of the, um, that date. And, and, um, interviews will be conducted with, with yourselves, the appropriate liaison. And then they will bring that appointment to you for your consideration, like Mariana did tonight.
That'd be good because it just didn't feel comfortable the past few times even the mayor brought it forward where we brought all these people on the Saturday morning and we were saying, uh, I like you, I like you. I don't know about you, but I think I know you and see you later to you as well. And it just felt very unfair. And I did have a conversation with another council member from another city who we kind of mirrored this off of. And she says it's the same thing. It's, it's just, it's just very uncomfortable, very brutal, like Bear says. And, uh, it's down the road over here in San Marcos. And sometimes it just feels like it's, 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 it's not transparent enough and, and not, uh, fair in a sense to where we've, we've got to fix it. And I think what we've been doing lately by assigning each council member, uh, boards, well, somebody's with the parks, somebody's with the libraries, somebody's with the train depot, that really could help streamline to where we would have an idea of the type of board we're really interested in, in, in helping select those that could, that could, uh, serve on that board.
We, we felt the, the direction of the council to streamline that process. And I, having gone through it with you, I feel like we're, we're there and this kind of just tidies up the rest of that streamlining effort that y'all directed us to do.
Yes, ma'am, I, I fully support that. I yield, Mayor.
Councilmember Floris Cale, sorry.
No, I just have a quick question about the Economic Development and Tourism Board. It says adding in the ability to appoint someone who doesn't live in the city, but meets the qualifications of a specific board seats. Does that not already happen in that, in that group or in that committee? I, cause I feel like we do have that.
It exists today, but on the ordinance, it says that you must live within the city. So the intent of the council was to be able to appoint folks who don't live in the city, but have a significant presence, uh, which is also better defined in the ordinance to that, that commission. Uh, so this cleans that up.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Parsley.
I would actually like to remove that and keep them within the city. Just, um, that would be my suggestion. I do have a question about, um, particularly the Kyle Arts and Cultural Commission. Um, this was brought up at a member. Um, there's nothing specific in the charter that talks about the chair and when does it need to be, uh, a new person needs to be appointed to be the chair of that commission. So I don't know if those suggestions need to come at some point when we do a revision.
I'm looking it up right now, but I believe that it says once a year. So it'll be like once the new seats are filled. So after y'all make the appointments for the expiring people in September, then they will select a new chair. That's so, that's pretty consistent throughout our boards and commissions. Um, and I'll confirm right now if it's already in there.
Okay, I was just seeing that particular one is the only one that was brought up to me. And then the other thing is, since they are, the Kyle Arts and Cultural Commission shall serve in an advisory capacity to the city council. And then it says events, projects that will benefit the residents. They will also advise council on the use of any funds. So when they come into our budget workshop with a list of things to get approved, who, who reviews those suggestions before they come to us? Is anyone reviewing that?
They should come back to you. Uh, they should, it, it should come as a recommendation from the commission, a formal recommendation from the commission to the city council. Even though they have a budget to do those things and y'all have approved it, it should come as a formal recommendation. Y'all should be able to take action on that.
Okay.
Council, Councilmember Heiser.
Just, that'll be quick. Do you know on our economic development board, how many of the board members live in the city limits?
Who needs to claim that? I don't, I would have to look that up.
Okay, I'm just curious to know if we're making changes, I would, I think that would matter.
Well, this item is posted for action to clean up a policy, to make the policy consistent. It would be good to have a proposal brought forward if you're wanting to make substantive, substantive policy changes. That's not really the way it's posted, so. Councilmember Floris Cale.
Thank you, I want to, um, piggyback off of what, um, Councilmember Parsley was saying. Um, I think it's because the Art and Commission Board is so new, but I never see them come to us to ask. They just have been doing. And I know me and Councilmember Parsley have asked to be included in some of the events. And it's like, oh, well, we'll see what the board says. And so I've, I feel like that board is kind of, um, kind of backwards. Whereas we're taking whatever they want us to do and kind of go out and like, I want them to come to us, ask, and then we talk about it and then we can decide. Um, so I would like to see more of that structure in, in that. And it's already in place, it's just a matter of, um, making sure that they follow through.
Absolutely, and I plan to get more involved in that process and making that happen because I agree it does need to come before y'all and we need to get more formal, uh, recommendations coming from them.
Thank you.
Councilmember Heiser.
I, I mean, I'd, I'd like to propose a modification to this language here with Economic Development and Tourism Board. Uh, I mean, I'd like to cap the number. I mean, I can, I can live with having a person or two on the board who doesn't live in the city, but I don't want to live in a world where it's full of non-Kyle residents.
I don't want to have anybody that doesn't live in the city of Kyle. That would be my recommendation.
Well, the more transparent way to do that would be to post it that way, to allow for the public to give input on what they think as well. As opposed to late in the evening when it hasn't been posted that way. It's just posted for, uh, minor ordinance revisions to clean up a policy. This is, this is, in my opinion, this is not the time to go in and try to take a vote when there's no one here to speak and it's not being presented to us.
Well, I'd just like to, to change one sentence, to add a sentence.
Do you want to make that, do you want to make that motion?
All right.
If I might, just, just to add, maybe add some context behind what Councilmember Heiser is, is thinking about. Uh, many of the executives who work at the hospital, work at ACC, um, own a significant business in the city. Unfortunately, Kyle doesn't have that level of housing yet, uh, so they don't necessarily live in Kyle. But they are a significant stakeholder in Kyle because of their business, because of the company they run. So I just want to make sure, you know, that we're thinking about that and we're not, um, you know, it's just, I just want to make sure that it's in, in your minds. And it could be, we could workshop it and bring it back.
Yeah, yeah, if, if we could do that. I mean, I don't want to blow up this whole thing, I just would like to see a slight modification. I'm not trying to reinvent the wheel here, but there are, yeah, we'll leave it at that.
I'm sorry.
Do you want to make a motion for that or?
Well, Victoria's.
She has something to say.
Um, yes, Victoria Vargas, Director of Economic Development. Um, I was upstairs in my office and so prime, before the, before we had the, um, Economic Development Board, it was a committee made up of local Kyle, um, residents. And I think what we found is that we had a hard time with the residents really understanding economic development. And we were spending a lot of time training them, giving them one-on-ones on, uh, three-eighty agreements and that sort of thing. So we decided to structure it and change it to a board and have it be more like an economic development board that you would see for a corporation and have stakeholders. And most of these stakeholders, um, our ACC stakeholder lives in Cedar Park, but he has a significant presence here because of our ACC campus. Um, our utility provider lives in Johnson City, but of course, you know, she, she's here regularly at the Kyle office. So I'd hate to restrict, um, um, the board members to live in Kyle, especially for the Economic Development Board. Um, I mean, we can have some, but our, we have one that lives in Kyle right now and that's our board chair. The others, um, have a significant, uh, presence in Kyle, whether they're business owners, but they don't necessarily live here. So just something to consider.
So what action do we need? Is it just a, a presentation, Amber, that you're bringing? I mean, I'm just wondering what we should do.
I would ask that you approve the amendments that are before you tonight and direct staff to bring back, uh, research and analysis on, uh, the Economic Development Board regarding, uh, residency requirements in Kyle.
Well, if, if that's the case, if only one of the board members lives in the city, that's not, that's what I don't want. So I, I don't, I don't know if the research needs to be done, uh, to validate that claim. But I would like to say, I, I, I would like to make a motion to amend the language in this summary of changes to say that no more than three people on the board of the seven, how, seven?
Seven.
Of the seven could live outside the city limits.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Heiser, seconded by Councilmember Floris Cale, uh, that we amend the Boards of Commissions' policy regarding economic development to limit the number of, uh, uh, board members who can exist, uh, reside outside of the city limits to three. Is there discussion on the motion?
Well, may I, may I ask a question? Those three members that live outside the city limits have businesses within the city of Kyle, correct?
Yeah, there are six who live outside the city currently, so you make this motion, take this vote. Um, Victoria has a hard day tomorrow. So if you would just take some time to process it, post it and, and flesh out how to make this transition in a more appropriate way, it will go smoother than being, seeming like it's some kind of knee jerk late in the evening reaction when they aren't here and are, it's not properly posted and there's no opportunity for a robust discussion.
It is, it is not like it's like, like this is a conversation we have had. So right now, as I'm seeing this, I cannot approve that the economic development can live outside Kyle because it's a conversation we have had. I don't think it has been in depth, but we have had that conversation.
This is, this is a seven-year policy that we're changing in a dramatic way. And now we have board members who are going to have to resign immediately upon taking this vote. It's not just as simple as making a policy change here, we have to have the time to flesh it out.
Okay, can we then make a motion to approve everything with the exception of the economic development changes for us to then direct staff to do a revision of the Economic Development Board?
You could, you could.
The policies and procedures.
As it is today, we're in violation of, of the residency requirements, uh, the current code, so we could leave that out. I guess, uh, we would appreciate direction to, to not ask the current board members to resign because we're not sure who we would be asking to resign and, uh, what, how that would affect their board seats. So if you don't want to make that change tonight, just knowing that we keep the seats filled with the folks in place until we get a better idea and are able to bring y'all back more information about, uh, what that would look like.
Councilmember Floris Cale.
Thank you, um, I'm in favor of taking out the part of the economic development as well too. Um, as far as asking someone to resign, that's, I don't think that's. well, too. As far as asking someone to resign, that's, I don't think that's a concern of the majority, or of me at least. My, our concern is having enough people from Kyle on this board. But I don't, I think Mayor Mitchell's right. We don't need to make any hasty decisions tonight. I think we should be able to come back and discuss this like we were supposed to, but we were waiting for Mr. Langley. So I think this has been a talk, a long talk that's been coming. Like, we've been trying to make this decision for a long time. So if we take out the economic development and tourism aspect of this, what does that do? That, that keeps the people there now until we can further make, I mean, we won't be in compliance, correct?
Correct.
But we'll, we can keep the people in now, and then we can discuss it later on.
Right. And then, and then, yes, exactly. And then, should there be any vacancy, they would have to comply, in between making those changes, they would have to comply with the residency requirement.
Which is what we're looking for. And I get what you're saying, like, we don't want to just kick people off of there. But the concern for, it sounds like to me, for Daniela and, or Councilmember Parsley and Councilmember Heiser, is they want people from Kyle on here. And we don't know what that looks like right now. So I think in order to appease both of them, we put that part on hold, we okay the rest of it, and then we come together collectively and decide what we want this economic board to look like.
Yes. And I think what we can do is we can come back with additional information about how these boards are constructed across other communities. It's, it's not an unusual conversation of the residency requirement. That's something that a lot of councils wrestle with, and we can give you some options of how to do that. And a transition plan is if you have some non-residents that need to transition off the board, when would that be? It's not maybe an immediate resignation, but maybe that's at the end of their term or a certain number of months. We could give some thought to how that would be done and give you an orderly way to transition that board to a different model based on your direction. So we can come back and do that.
Okay. I will say, I think the fear is, it's not going to come back. So we need to make sure that we do bring it back and we address this issue. And maybe that's the reason for the urgency, but I have full faith in you guys that you will bring it back to us.
Well, so I don't think that, that they should bring it back. I think that's very much a policy question. So there should be a sponsorship from this board to bring it forward. But it's not sponsored and trying to get action right away. It's sponsored to make a proposal, get the consensus and discuss, you know, what we want to do, and then direct staff to bring back a plan consistent with that direction, you know? So that's, that gives some time. It's like you're fleshing it out over a period of time to allow for it to be thought through. But it's not the, it's not the will of the, the Economic Development Director to do this. It needs to be our will. I'm not saying that I agree or disagree with it. That's not my point. I'm talking about the process, to try to make that process happen transparently and professionally, so that we can consider all of the different factors associated with it, have that discussion posted properly in a meeting, and then take the next steps from there. As opposed to this, which is more like piggybacking off of changing, you know, compli, there's nothing substantive that's being proposed here on this, in terms of how it was, in terms of how it was presented for, for action. And so that policy change should come from this dais. And it's not post-it, trying to make a vote right away. It's post-it for discussion. And then if everybody's in agreement that we want to make a change, then we can all collectively give staff the direction to flesh that part of it out and bring something back.
Could we have the attendance and the agendas included in whatever research that you guys do for each of the, the members?
Of course.
Okay. So there is a motion on the floor. I don't know if Bear wants to.
I just have one comment, one clarification. You're, you're currently in compliance. The, the Economic Development Board is currently in compliance with the ordinance because your ordinance allows for there to be people that are appointed to the boards that have a significant presence of the community. And the purpose of cleaning up the language, part of the purpose was to define what is meant by significant presence in the community. And so that language was moved into the Economic Development Board, and it was kind of fleshed out with, giving council the ability to elect members that are outside of the city limits. So that's the path to what you have in front of you.
So we don't even need to approve that then, if it's, we're already in compliance?
Correct. You're currently in compliance. If you remove the language that allows flexibility on residency for Economic Development Board, then that will cause your current board to be out of compliance. It'll cause your current board to not be, meet the residency requirements.
Right. So the action that was being proposed, it's already written that a significant presence in the community. This action just clarifies what that is. So you don't want to remove all the language. You can allow for the existing vague language to stay and then bring back a policy change. This just clarifies what the existing policy says. So we're, I'm just, I'm trying to get us to, really, we should just allow for all these changes to take place because it is consistent with the policy of seven years, based on what's been written here. And then we, at, at another time, can bring back an actual change proposed to this policy and discuss just that, as well as potentially changes to the policies of the Arts and Cultural Commission, where it gets properly posted for discussion.
So Bear's motion is?
So to recap, the need here is to amend my motion, and, and what it, the consensus here is, is that amend the motion, approve everything, and then come back at a later date and instruct staff to make structural, long-term changes to?
Come back and propose changes to this board and allow for this board to, to discuss just that item with it being properly posted.
May I ask you, because you just said it, what does the board itself need to discuss if we, as council, want to make changes?
Because you just picked a number out of your hat just a second ago, and we're not considering the ramifications. Have we taken that?
It's half. It's, it's no more than, it's not half. Like, we want to go just under half.
What I'm saying is, we haven't even considered the ramifications of what your vote to change the policy right away.
No, that's fine. I, I can see that. But I'm just asking, like, once, in this, once we do this, what is, what is, the board wants, any board will, any person will want to protect themselves from having to resign or being tossed off a board, obviously. What is, like, what kind of input are we looking for from them? So I set expectations here. What?
From who? I'm sorry.
From the board. If, if we're supposed to come back to, as council, and come back with a, a plan or suggested changes for the economic and tourism.
I think it's more about giving the council the courtesy of properly posting what you really are intending to accomplish, so that we may have days to consider the proposal ahead of time, as opposed to being forced to take a vote on a number that you just came up with when we haven't really had the opportunity to really ask the questions. And we're having Victoria run down here to try to answer questions for us when, when it's not what's being properly posted.
May I, may I ask, if, I know there is a motion on the floor. I don't know if it can be amended. I will not be voting for this if it has the economic development here. I would like to approve it and then direct staff to maybe create a task force to do a revision of the whole Economic Development Board, the goals and objectives, and the members of the board, to include the members. Who should be a member? Where should they reside? And where do they have businesses? There is a motion in the table.
All right.
What is that motion, by the way?
I need a second here.
I think Mayor Mitchell, the concern is, it's obvious that regardless of what the outcome is, there are certain council members that would like to see this a mostly Kyle resident board. So I don't know if it's going to make a difference. I understand your posting and wanting to properly notice. I do understand that. And there would be a chance to do that when, in the next step that we take, because I know there's an ordinance that has to be, that has to be created and we have to vote on. This is, this would just be a first step.
No, this is, this is a properly posted staff item with an ordinance as a backup for first reading. This is not a council-sponsored item.
But there is no harm in taking out even, taking out the economic development part.
Well, the, the economic development part currently exists, has existed for a bunch of years. So if you take it out, then you are, you're making the, the board out of compliance with the policy. So it's, it's about, you can leave it in and not change it.
I don't, just one, one clarification, and if the C-Secretary will help me confirm, that there's only one board that has members that are not residing within the city limits, and that's the Economic Development Board. So removing the provision that allows for members to be appointed who have significant ties to the community, that would enforce a residency requirement across all the boards and commissions except for economic development, that provision about allowing residency to be outside of the city limits, under the ordinance that's in front of you, is only in the Economic Development Board because that's the only board that has members outside of the city limits.
So we're in compliance.
So if you adopt the ordinance as proposed, it enforces a residency requirement for all boards except for economic development and tourism?
Correct.
Yes.
So, but if they're talking about taking that part out, which goes beyond three, it goes to seven, and we haven't had a chance to even really discuss it. I have comments and things I'd like to, to discuss on that, but it's not, it's just not posted for that. It's, it's not something that we're prepared to discuss at this point in time.
And so Councilmember Heiser, so if you, you selected three, what three members? Is it the member that represents business? Is it the member that represents the developers? Is it the, the, the member, we, staff would not have any direction, nor would council have any information to help y'all make that decision, who, who, who comes off right, you know, right away? The, and plus, if you enforce it, you enforce it on three, so then does the existing, so I'm, I'm just pointing this all out because I think there are things that we need to flesh out. A council or staff will want more direction from you to be able to bring you back an ordinance that accurately captures what you want for this board.
I, I get that. I, and I don't, Amber, I don't want to fight over this. Like, I, it, it's just, it's what you just said to me, Carrie, there's a lack of, there's ambiguity in terms of who would go, who would stay. But the whole spirit of the, like, significance plays a significant role in Kyle, like, that's just as ambiguous on the other end. So I, I don't want to hide behind that. We don't have to make a decision. We're not, I don't want to pull the rug on, on this now, because I don't like people finding out, which I'm sure they've already found out, that this is being discussed, that it's happening this quickly. But I do want it to happen. And I fully intend to bring something back at the next council meeting, because Victoria, what you said before about how you, as staff, worked with residents of Kyle who were part of the board, and they didn't, you know, there was a lack of education in terms of economic development in the city. Like, I mean, we're a growing city. Like, let's take ownership of that. And I want to create a world where we can start to empower the people here to want to participate. And I think that's,
You're right.
It's, it's not a shot at anyone on the board now, but I, it doesn't have to be that way. And I get it with participation. A lot, I've heard from other board, board members who say that there are boards we have right now where people show up and they're like, when is it over? And that's a common sentiment. And I would like, given that, you know, I'm participating with this board, like, do whatever I possibly can to try to create a culture where people want to participate and learn and make an impact.
Right. And the board we've had now has been in existence for, I don't know, five, seven years now. And so we are a totally different city than we were back then. So we probably, and, and we have totally different industry now that we could probably pull from. So I'd be open to exploring both options.
Is it possible to make an effective date? So even if we approve it now, it goes into effect in 60 days?
We also have the pending joint workshop with our board that we could also discuss if we feel comfortable discussing in front of them, or, or staff can bring something forward to council.
Good question. If, I can amend the motion, and let's say we just approve all this stuff right now. Can I come back at the next meeting and say, and present changes solely to this board?
Yes, 100%. And you can post it that way.
You could. And we could also bring back a work session. Present various options for you to consider, for then you to have a discussion and provide direction on what you would like to see as an ordinance brought back and a change.
Okay. I will withdraw my motion. Yes? Withdraw my motion? And then just, if we could set up a meeting with, I'll talk to you after.
Okay. Mayor, I'd like to go and make a motion to approve Agenda Item 34. All right. Second, the motion's made by Mayor Protem, seconded by mayor that we approved Agenda Item 34. Is there discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed?
Nay.
All right. Motion carries five to two. All right. Next up is Agenda Item 35, Second Reading and Ordinance of the City of Kyle, Texas, Disannexing and Discontinuing Approximately 62.47 Acres More or Less from Being a Part of the City Pursuant to Section 43.145, Texas Local Government Code, Repealing Ordinance 1010, Providing for Open Meetings and Provided for Related Matters. I'd like to make a motion to approve. Second, motion by mayor, seconded by Mayor Protem. Is there discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? All right. Motion carries five to zero. Next up, I'm going to skip to Agenda Item 37, Presentation About the International Trails Summit. Councilmember Parsley.
I am going to send, I don't know, to Grant really quickly, the presentation. Can we do 38 and then go back to 37? So I can send that to Grant?
Uh, next up is Agenda Item 38, Consider Approval of a Resolution Approving for the La Verde Park Monument to Include but Not Limited to the Story of La Verde Park and Suggested contributors. Councilmember Floris Cale.
All right. Thank you. I'm not completely sure why I had to sponsor this agenda item. During the May 2nd, 2023 council meeting, the council discussed the monument going into La Verde. In voicing my concerns regarding the verbiage, specifically names I did not feel were appropriate to place on this monument, Chair responded, "We can send drafts for council to review, and we can have agenda items to discuss any issues." Contrary to me being assured that staff would place any discussion on the agenda, I was informed if I wanted to discuss my concerns, I would have to sponsor the item under my name, which brings me here. When I was reading the draft story of La Verde, I was expecting a unique explanation of the history behind the area and the name. Instead, I felt like I was reading a sales pitch to anyone who wanted to rent an apartment located within La Verde. The verbiage was abstract and lacked actual basic and historical facts. There's a lack of intimacy, which can be seen in the second paragraph, which refers, references Kyle residents as stakeholders. I couldn't help but wonder who the audience was and for which the story was written. I was also unable to find the name La Verde within the draft story provided to us, a name which many residents have pointed out to me as being grammatically incorrect. My hope is that council can discuss and will consider removing the law from the name, allowing for simply Verde Park. If we learned nothing else from Fajita Drive, we should have learned the importance of respecting the Hispanic heritage within our city. I have several concerns regarding the names as contributors. According to the story, the financing for this area was approved in 2018, meaning a vote to begin creation on this area was taken. I believe any council who voted to approve the TERS should be included in the listed names. I would also like to know why only two Hayes County Commissioners are included on the list, as well as address my concern for the previous city manager, who I do not support, being added to any city document, monuments. Finally, I would also like to see council names written in a less divisive manner by placing the mayor and Mayor Protem's under the same column as a city council. Titles could always be included under the city council column to specify positions such as Mayor Travis Mitchell. My hope is to have a dialogue allowing each of us to discuss our thoughts honestly and openly without the harsh criticism.
I yield the floor.
The floor is yielded. Is there discussion?
Yeah, I'll start.
Mayor Protem.
Okay. So, I guess the question is, is that we're trying to figure out, I guess my thing would be, who, who, who wrote the story of La Verde Park? Is, is that the question that we're bringing up? And then, when it comes to the contributors, Ms. Floris Cale, what is it that you find either lacking or feeling that, that they don't, that somebody on here doesn't qualify to be listed as a contributor? Or is it, or is it something else? Because I know that there's mayor, there's Mayor Protem, and there's my name, and Robert, and, and and Rick. But I'm just trying to get a better understanding from you. What is it about the contributors that you have, you have some reservations on?
Well, under city council, I don't think there is, there's everybody that was on the council from 2018 forward?
2020 to 2023?
Well, if you read the story of La Verde, it references it being started in 2018 with the vote to create the area. So I feel like if in 2018 it was started, 2018 to current should have all the council members' names on it.
Okay. And that would include Shane Airby and Daphne Tenorio?
Yes. And I don't know, I don't know all of them. I just know that there's more than what's on here.
And you mentioned one more about city manager?
Yeah, without going into too much detail, I feel like we could probably do without any city managers on this monument, just for any future issue. My other concern would be the Hayes County Commissioners. I was confused why there was only two. I think, I'm not sure if the county took a vote in that 2018 TERS.
Rachel Sonier, Communications Director for the record, specifically around the Hayes County Commissioners. I think the reason those two are selected is because they are the ones that have Kyle in their precinct. We could add all the county commissioners, but they didn't take a vote to support this, to my knowledge. Those were just the commissioners, I believe, that oversaw the precinct. And I think they might, are those commissioners, and were they involved in the TERS?
Yes.
Okay, so I think that is the other reason, is those the two commissioners are in the TERS that La Verde is in.
So I guess, I guess, I just feel like if, if the TERS had to pass the county commissioners, that they all had to take an active vote in it for them to agree to be in the TERS, then why would we not list them all?
I do not have an answer for that. This was just sort of something that was given to me.
Okay. Was this what Jerry gave to you?
It was an inherited project after Sellers and Samantha were both left in around the same month. It just kind of, you know, fell on communications a lot. But as far as I know, I don't know if the county, how their TERS vote went, as far as like, who was on the commission whenever that vote took place and all of that. So we probably need to get information from the county on that, if that's the case.
Okay. Well, they've done, they've done a great job of working with us in that TERS, so I would like to, not just the two that are in there now, but like, overall, anyone who had to take a vote on the county. Okay, any other questions?
So I have a question, continuing questions. And so if we're going to look and try to say, well, whatever feelings we have towards Mr. Sellers, are we going to have the same issue when it comes to the Public Safety Center? Or any other ones we have? Because I just kind of want to, as they say, nip it in the butt. These were council members and city employees who made contributions to the research, to the votes, to the financing, and so forth. You know, maybe the Hayes County Commissioners may be in question, maybe because it's because they live here in Kyle. But if we're going to go across the board on the commissioners, Judge Basset is on there as well. So I guess it's a matter of, like, whenever we had these legacy projects, I know a lot of people were using that term, what was the actual policy or procedure when it came to designing these monuments or these, 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 what do you call it? I guess that's what we would call, yeah, dedications. And so, you know, it's just a matter of trying to figure out why, what would be the purpose, or what's, again, trying to have an understanding, what the reasoning would be to remove certain, certain individuals from here that had contributed to this specific project.
So the, the logic behind the selection of the names, as has been the case for Mary Kyle Hartson, for Heroes Memorial Park, for the Public Safety Center, and for the La Verde Park, is the council and staff, executive staff, that were there when the initial contract was given to spend resources kicking off the project. So that is the first contract for Lionheart to begin the design. That's when resources were expended. The project concludes at the ribbon cutting, and it's everyone who is involved along the way, whether you voted for it or whether you voted against it. If you were a part of it, you get your name on it. And the order is in order of tenure. So the commissioners, you look like you're really trying to stop me. You got something you were trying to say? Okay, so the commissioners who are on there are on the TERS 2 board, and the reason that that is significant is because the TERS 2 board approves the funding for reimbursement of this park and reimbursement of the Heroes Memorial Park back to the general fund, which makes it not just a county project, but a TERS reimbursed project, which makes it seem to me that those commissioners in particular deserve to be on the dedication plaque, even though it was a 100% city-funded project to begin with. So in my opinion, the argument could be made to add Commissioner Cohen to this list because she is a recent, brand-new addition. Although because of the reimbursement element, and the fact that we will be voting on a budget to kick that off from the TERS, I think it would probably honor her to add that language as well. But that's, that's the logic. From the beginning vote to expend funds, which actually sets us off on the path to constructing the project, to when the ribbon is cut, are really, the truth is, it's when the last funds are spent. So, for example, on the Public Safety Center, Councilmember Heiser and Councilmember Zuniga came on, and there really wasn't anything left to do, except that we had some change orders that required votes and action from the council. And to me, that's what extended it to that point. La Verde has been a project that has been very snakebit, and so it's still not finished, and there's still construction underway. So it makes sense to me to have Mr. Langley on there as well. I will not, I will not reference comments to try to strip the former city manager's name from this item. I find that offensive, so.
So as, so basically, at the official ribbon cutting, whoever is officially an elected official from the city would be recognized if they had some kind of contributing votes or on that end?
Yeah, so for the Public Safety Center, it was at the time of hiring PGAL and spending money on the architecture.
Okay.
From Mary Kyle Hartson, it was the time of hiring Coleman and Associates, till the last money was spent. From Heroes Memorial Park, it was the time of hiring Philip Koski's group, until that project was completed. And for La Verde, it's the time of hiring Lionheart and the council there, trying to make it consistent across the board. And, and then the conclusion is basically, once it's time to order the dedication element, whoever's still there, you know, and everyone that came before, and then in order of tenure. So that's the, that's just pretty much the way it has been brought forward, collaborative effort. Old staff, old council were involved, current staff, current council have been involved. It's, it's one of those things where not everybody will agree. This is just a can of worms to bring up and, and try to debate who should or should not be on there. But I've, I've tried to keep it consistent and logical. And if there's a, you know, if there's a desire to change that policy now, it's obviously the prerogative of this board to do so. I don't, I don't see what we're gaining by doing that. I think it's very fair and very consistent.
Well, I don't think that's a real policy. I think that's something you just made up and connected altogether, so I do appreciate that. I am trying to be super nice in this whole conversation, and so I'm not going to go down that snake hole. But I have my reasons, and I think everybody on this board knows darn good and well why I have those reasons, and I'm not going to change those reasons.
That's fine.
So with that said, I would like to make a motion to remove the name Scott Sellers from the contributors section of the memorial, not the memorial, the dedication at La Verde Park.
All right, there's a motion to remove Mr. Sellers from the dedication element. Is there a second? Motion fails for lack of a second. I'd like to make a motion to add Commissioner Cohen to the list of contributors from the county for her to participate in TERS 2. Motion by Mayor seconded by Councilmember Heiser. Is there discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? All right, motion carries, seven to zero.
Make sure we have her full name, Dr. Michelle.
Yeah, Dr. Michelle Cohen.
All right, can we, now can we move on to the verbiage as far as maybe getting some warmth put back into the story, get some better well-defined descriptions and some history? I do know that the bobcat came because there was a council member who did attend Texas State, and it's not just me. But I think something along those lines to describe why we have the playset that we do or certain setups in that park, I think that's important to note. I would like someone to go there and understand why that park was built the way it was, and not just something that is vague, abstract, and not so personal to the city. So I don't know if we want to like...
Do you want to, like, you want to propose to write something? Like, you want to write it?
I'm not saying, no, that's, like, I totally went in and I questioned a lot of it because it's, I don't think it's personal. I think this is a very special park to a lot of people, and in honoring that, even though it...
Look, I hated everything about before. I don't hate what you're proposing now. I've read it, too. I didn't really like it either. But it's a question of, this is what the, this is what Lionheart proposed. I think it was Lionheart that wrote it. It was Rebecca who wrote it. So if we wanted to direct Rachel to go back and potentially try to add some more color and context around the specifics of the park, as opposed to maybe the development, is that something you, you think you could make some changes on? But this can't be a, we got to wait two weeks, and then come back and re-revised and wait two weeks. She needs to order the plaque right now.
Yes, I do have to get the plaque ordered within the next two weeks if we're going to meet our deadlines. So this would need to be quick. I am 100% comfortable with helping rewrite it. I would like to get some direction from council, the sort of things like the bobcat, other kind of items like that, that y'all think merit, specific highlighting, features, things like that. And then I would rather not have to bring it back to the 20th because I would like to get it ordered before then. So if we could maybe send it out via email to council and get any feedback on the revised version afterwards, that would be my preferred method for getting edits made.
Would anybody have any reservations, Yvonne? And you work on that, or would anybody else would like to do that as well?
I've got some reservations.
Okay.
Why don't...
Well, I'm bringing it forward.
I do appreciate the sentiment, but...
I'm just bringing it forward because you brought this agenda item. You brought both of these items. So it's like, you didn't like what was written, you felt it wasn't warm enough. Now we're asking Rachel to spend two weeks to try to get something quickly. And so, you know, giving you the courtesy to say, this is some of the verbiage that I would like to bring forward on, because it's, it's not any one of us. It was, it was an agenda item you brought forward. That's why I'm just respectfully asking you if you have any words or any kind of sentences that you would like to contribute to the writing, then that's where I'm trying to make the reservation.
I do have a suggestion. On the Spanish section, you say, it says Bienvenido a La Verde Park, and then it talks about un parque, which is like, brings comments that we have made before about the name of La Verde. So I think that needs to be rewritten, too.
The Spanish portion? The Spanish portion will be updated when we do the, what we usually do is we rewrite the whole entire English section. Once that has been officially approved and is good to go, then I will send it to a translator and...
Who proves that? I'm sorry.
Who proves the Spanish part of it? We send it to a translator here, and I think it's actually in South Austin is the company. It's called Language USA, but they specialize specifically in Texas Spanish.
Maybe we could have Daniela help on the Spanish part of it.
I mean, if anyone feels comfortable, I myself do not speak Spanish, so...
If we're going to, you know, make this a collaborative effort, then yes.
Is it too late to change that name to Verde, plain Verde Park?
I will say, it has been branded on Park.
Okay.
But there's, there's a water tower.
And there's a water tower that we spent a lot of money on.
But to be fair, to just take out either the L or the LA wouldn't be terribly hard.
I, I have no idea in the sense of, I haven't fabricated or made any of the elements, so I'm not sure what, like, kind of cost would be associated with that for any kind of orders that, like, I don't know if it's engraved on stone somewhere already, or I know it's on a water tower 100%. I don't know what that would cost or what the process would be.
That's not my intention. I just know that it doesn't sound right.
And to be fair, it's been brought up to me by several residents, and I figured if I'm going to bring it up and...
I can see Mariana nodding from here.
But yeah, as I say, we all know, it is grammatically incorrect. People do complain about it. It is a bit embarrassing when people say, hey, what is the story behind that? And I have no idea. I have no idea why we went that far with it. I think had someone just pointed it out a little bit sooner. I know during discussions, it was, hey, you know, it's really not law, and it was just kind of laughed off. But then when it went up there, there was a lot of feedback about how that is incorrect. And I was like, okay, well, if we, at some point, we can just stop digging a hole and fix it, or we can just leave it and hope that in the future it doesn't cause an issue.
I mean, we will do whatever council's decision is. At the end of the day, that's always going to be the word, so.
I think some of this is just a opinion and personal preference. I actually like the word La Verde. And I think it's, I don't, I don't see this as not being totally warm. I think that I would like to read something like this and understand the square foot, the number of visitors, the events, the people down there. So it's, it incorporates almost everything. It has the wildlife part of it, the introduction is welcoming. I really don't see how, how different adding the bobcat in here is going to make this story.
I mean, I'm more than happy to juge up the language any way that I can. I mean, I can see where maybe the square footage and stuff like that might be considered cold to some people or not, like, you know, warm information, so to speak. So I feel like there's a way to maybe play around with it, being informative, talking about what the parks were.
Your team is, your newest hire's got more, some writing chops.
Yes, she's a news reporter.
So why don't, why don't, why don't we, why don't we let you guys? I think we need to let them be in charge of it.
Right.
And I don't want it to come back to council.
Okay.
So, but I do think giving you direction to, like, we understand that this is a copy that was produced by Lionheart, but to give you, to just let you know that we'd love to see you put a little bit more of a personal stamp on it from the standpoint of Kyle, and then also just entrust that y'all are going to be professional and objective in the way that you handle that. But I want it to be something that y'all are comfortable with, as opposed to feeling like there's a bunch of different council members jockeying for words and sentences within it.
Yes.
You guys can be an impartial group that can put that copy together, something you're proud of, and then I would say, go.
That, that sounds fair, and thank you. And again, council, we got to try to catch this not on the 11th hour on all these things. I know a lot of times if we're changing things at the last minute.
Are we leaving TDS in there?
I did want to talk about that. There were a couple of, I sent out in the email whether we want to add Parks Board, the Parks and Recreation Board, to the contributors section somewhere. And then the Texas Disposal Systems, that was something that I think was directed under the previous city manager to put under there, but I'm not really sure what the history is behind it.
Yes, so Texas Disposal Systems made an initial contribution as a part of a negotiation for a contract that they received. So they gave us money when we negotiated, and we wanted to use it in that way.
I see.
So to me, there's like a little bit of a gray area. It's like, I know they want to put their name on there, but I'm not sure, other than that. But they did contribute as a part of that negotiation, trees and some other foliage. So we ended up putting it on Heroes Memorial Park. So if you want to put it on La Verde, you know, it would be consistent. But the Parks Board did not have any involvement in the creation, funding, or construction of this. That doesn't mean that they're not going to be involved in other parks, but they just, they just were not involved here. So, Councilmember Heiser?
Yeah, I would like to say that we need to give more direction and, or provide more support. There's nothing worse than, as a writer, being told to make changes to something that... There's nothing worse than as a writer being told to make changes to something that's been as vague as what I just heard from council here, which is exactly like four different, three different people giving feedback to someone who is supposed to just miraculously fix this problem with the help of someone who is recently hired. So to me, that's setting-
Right, but we are not prepared to do that.
I understand.
Which is why, I don't like us trying to do it from the dais, but-
What if we have one or two council members participate in either one meeting or even an email thread where Rachel can research some topics?
That's been made about various people having too much influence in how something is brought forward. And there could be a situation where, where, where what gets pushed forward as copy that needs to be, is not what someone else would want.
I don't see any two better people than for you, Mr. Mayor, and you, Ms. Floris Cale, to collaborate with Rachel and the communications team to make sure this gets done by the two-week deadline that she has in order to order this on time.
Just to, just to piggyback, and I know we're talking about this, we need to keep moving. This is getting too late. We're talking about this too much. But the point I'm trying to make, you're right, because what's going to happen is, is that we're going to design a task force, just like that, and then three years from now, we'll have a new council, and then we're going to say, I wasn't involved in that decision. Who wrote this? And so that's, that's the point I'm trying to make, is whoever brought this on the agenda item, if you've got something to say or want to contribute, by all means, go from there. And, and, and it just seems like on these projects, we're trying to get done on the 11th hour, right when we're about ready to build these things and order this. It's like, I don't like the way this is looking. I don't want, I want it totally different. We've got to, now, I can't say you can't stop this, but we just got to be able to look at this objectively.
Well, this just got brought to us, just so we're real clear. This is not council's doing.
But it's like, when it's there, and so forth, but-
Is there a motion on the floor or not?
No.
No.
I would like to make, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to make a motion. So I'd make a motion to direct staff to proceed with the copy and to also authorize staff to update and warmify the copy as they see fit, taking into consideration the various discussions that they've heard, but understanding that they have final authority to put the copy together and make the order for the dedication element without having to bring it back to council.
Second.
Motion by the mayor seconded by Councilmember Parsley. Is there a discussion on that motion? All in favor say aye.
I'm not done. I think it's ridiculous that we don't get a second look at that.
All opposed.
Nay.
All right. Motion carries six to one. Next up is Agenda Item 36, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding an Update on the Vibe Trail. Councilwoman Floris Cale.
Was Daniela going to do hers? I mean, I can, I can postpone mine, postpone mine. We had put it on there because there was a mix-up in the communication, and so I don't mind. I think there, the staff was supposed to bring a presentation back to us, and so, is that right, Brian?
Yes, we talked about bringing back.
You got to flip it forward.
There we go. Thank you. We did talk to Councilmember Floris Cale about bringing back a detailed presentation of the vibe. We can give some statistics, status, funding, things like that, and we can bring that back at a later time. If the council's comfortable with that.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Next up, Agenda Item 37, Presentation About the International Trail Summit.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to do a really quick overlook of what the International Trail Summit, I think we had so much information that it was really hard to put a presentation with everything together. To this Trail Summit, it was, we went, Mariana, our Parks Director, Stacy Anderson, and Councilmember Heizer and I were, you know, so fortunate to be able to enjoy and learn so much from this summit. Do you want to?
So there's a lot of takeaways that we could talk to you about, and I think it would be a good idea when our Trails Committee is formed and functioning that we have, Councilmember Parsley and I can go meet with them to have more in-depth conversation about the individual, the individual sessions that we attended. We, in this presentation, we just wanted to talk about the things that we thought were most relevant to our city and the position that we're in currently with so many natural trails here and the vision of the Vibe Trail itself is a concept. So if, are we, yeah, oh, perfect. Okay, so benefits of a connected trail system. The impact to our local economy would be immense, short-term, almost from day one of activation of a citywide connected trail system. There is, there's so many benefits in terms of improved quality of life because, you know, one of the things that we all hear most frequently is the stresses of some of the, the lack of infrastructure that we have here. And so the Vibe Trail, excuse me, or trail system here in Kyle would not only in the short-term provide us the opportunity to take some cars off the road, but it would, the, the long-term vision could not only take cars off the road and allow people to be less reliant on automobiles, but we would, in essence, be a healthier city, and this would be a healthier place to live. And that goes into health and wellness benefits. And there were a couple of sessions that talked a lot about just the appreciation of nature and some of the various things that can happen when you have, when you build a trail system or you have natural trails and you foster its growth so that it can, it can continue to grow naturally. So I think that there's elements of that that can, we can pursue alongside the concept of the Vibe Trail.
Next.
So the next, and I kind of touched on this a little bit, is just the short-term capabilities of what our trail system, building that out alongside the Vibe Trail would allow more transportation options, which addresses infrastructure, road congestion, environmental impact, a significant environmental impact of getting cars off the road, especially with the, the rapid population growth in our city. And long-term is probably what I'm most excited about, is just the economic impact it can have and, you know, multi-million dollars a year. One, one thing, just one anecdote, the Department of Transportation did a presentation that, that laid out all of the natural trails that exist in the country, and I was shocked that there were so many. The thing is, is they don't really belong to anything. They're just trails that exist and people use them, but they're not part of, they're not part of something, kind of like what we're experiencing here in Kyle with some of these natural trails that we have, is we want to connect them to other things and to build an experience around it. And other cities in Texas are doing the same thing, and I'd love to, to look at how we as a, as a city can be a, can be a model for other cities, just going out north, south, east, west, to try to connect to ours, and where Kyle could become the epicenter of a natural trail system that has, you know, some different elements to it. So the, I think, I put some numbers, or put some numbers in.
Are these photos of the Reno area, or are these just photos that you grabbed, that you're talking about? When I'm looking at these, I'm there.
We have additional photos at the end.
Yeah, I wanted to see the Reno area. I mean, that's the trail system there. But, so you're just in general talking about?
No, we're talking about kind of what we learned during the summit, the pictures of the outdoor places are at the end.
Okay. Sorry, sorry, go ahead.
So, looking at, there was an economic impact report done by the Delaware River Watershed District, which, which averages around 40,000 visits per mile of the trail, which drives $6.3 million in annual spending on goods and services. So that is, when we think of all the small deals that we do when we're talking about, you know, first year on us, or, you know, whether we want to give sales tax, you know, leave money on the table, this is nothing but generating revenue for us, and it's something that can sustain itself for the most part. And we have a lot more data on the types of spend, like what people are spending their money on. So there is a lot of information out there that could guide our decision-making patterns for types of businesses that we would want to have surrounding the areas of our trail system. And so that's something I look forward to, to discussing more with Mariana and our about-to-be-seeded Trails Committee, or Trails Board, Board, Committee? Commission, or we're using, they're all the same now. So I think that's, you know, my, the biggest takeaway for me is just what this can be long-term. Initially, when I was learning about the Vibe Trail, I, I don't know that I saw the long-term vision until I got to Reno and I saw all these other cities who had, who had been working for years and years and years to develop their trail system, and how there are multiple trails, networks, networks of trails from, all the way from the far west coast of the country to the far east coast going up, that connects all the way up through Maine, and same thing, Maine down to the, the southernmost point of Florida. I mean, it's just, it was crazy to kind of, to see all this and inspiring on some level to know that something that I didn't even know existed for the most part is, very much could be a reality for a city, and I'm just thankful to be a part of this opportunity to try to drive the, the Vibe Trail forward.
If I may say something?
Nope.
So one of the most important reasons why I wanted to be a part of this is because we have been in, in contact with, you know, the Kyle Trails Coalition friends, and trying to understand what the city of Kyle residents want and what is, and if it kind of aligns with the Vibe Trail vision. In my head, I thought there has to be a way for us to kind of merge the trails and make everybody happy. Going to the Trails Summit, we had so many classes to take. It's really hard to kind of give you a scope of everything we learned, but one of the ones that I attended was Concrete Trails. It talked about the importance of, of having a very well-established trail. Said that for a city to maintain, it is the best way to go, it will be using concrete. Although, of course, we love the nature trails, the maintenance for those is really, it becomes really expensive, and it also takes time away from our parks or, or Parks Department. Sorry. My heart attack again. I learned that also the benefit that it has for people with disabilities, it really makes a difference because you can construct these concrete trails, and then we also saw all the equipment that is available for people with disabilities to actually go through a trail. It just really blew, blows away. So that just sold me. I sat down on one of the tables where they discussed different types of, like how thick it needs to be, and how the edges need to go, and what is the best way to construct a trail made out of concrete to make them last longer. So then I realized it really, it's not feasible to have one Vibe Trail and combine, you know, nature and concrete. I think we're going to have to have two of them, so I'm really happy to have a Trails Committee for us to kind of see what, what matters to Kyle and how we're going to make everybody, try to make everybody happy. The other thing that really got my attention is one of the classes that talked about land acquisition for trails and the options that are available in grants that we could apply when there is, when we want to do nature trails. And I don't know if Grant can skip to next one. That would be for bear, the next one. So like the motivations for the landowners and how do you approach them, and then what kind of grants are available? How do you want to try to talk to people, especially here in Texas that we have? It made me look up, made me think about a current landowner that has a lot of land that we want and also has farms, and how there are grants available in those situations to try to acquire those lands for trails. So it really gives us a lot of things to think about whenever we don't have the funding, what we can be applying for. And then on the next slide, we just have pictures of some of the machinery that Mariana and Stacy tried. That bicycle, it's done for, you know, for people that have disabilities, and I know Stacy tried that and another one. And they had a lot of fun just looking at all the machinery, and it was really informative, so.
What airline did y'all fly? Those seats look really comfortable.
They were tight.
It's like first class?
No.
Can we get an audit?
No, for sure.
That's not Southwest, that's all I-
Anyway, so I am really excited and eager to work with the Trails Board, that we just finished doing the interviews yesterday, and I believe that there is 12 people that are on the list. It's going to be very exciting to, we have very, people who is really excited to give ideas for the city trails, so. Bear has something to say.
No, I'm, I'm-
Well, I think, I loved your comment about the making Kyle a central point, like a nexus, so to speak, where other trail systems, because we have the Emerald Crown Trail, we have the Violet Crown Trail, we have the Vibe. You know, San Marcos has got some pretty incredible trails. In fact, like, pretty impressive if you go to some of what, what they do through their , but it's through nature conservancies, just exactly what you're talking about, working with landowners, conservation easements on various properties where landowners want to preserve their land, and you can turn it into a trail system. That's how they were able to obtain so much. And then I also kind of want to piggyback on what you said about concrete versus the nature trail, because I go on walks all the time. It's one of my favorite things to do, and anytime there's like rain or anything like that, there are certain trails that you just can't go on because they get muddy and they're uneven. But there are other trails that are concrete trails that even in the middle of having been a storm, if you take one step off, you're in soup, but you're able to go, and families, strollers, the whole thing is still available. And so that's, I think there's a place for both, is what, what you're saying, and so.
Oh, absolutely. Like, there is a group that likes to ride, you know, dirt bikes, and they want the nature trails. One of the classes we took was given by, the speaker was lady who used to be a Parks Director, and she will walk in this trail, she was like the director of that particular trail, will climb to the tallest stone, and she posted a picture, and she fell, and now she's completely paralyzed. So her city kind of adjusted her job, and she is now like the Director of the Disability Kind of Planning, and she has helped shape those trails to work for people like her now. So I think it's a lot to consider.
All right. Well, thank y'all for that briefing.
Comments, yes. Yes, so thank you guys for going up there. Did y'all observe any connectivity, like maybe in tunnels? Or how do you get from one side to another side? If y'all saw any roads where the trails have to bypass?
We didn't go into any actual trail. This was like a conference.
Oh, so, so you-
This was like the only day out.
I was hoping that y'all would see lighting or retail around the trails.
I missed the tunnels presentation of the conference.
No, we didn't.
Okay. Well, we do need both, right? Because the, the natural trails-
We do need-
Does not want to be encroached by the cement trail.
Right, you're right.
And-
And that's where my mentality was.
Both and, not an either or.
I thought eventually that we could merge.
Right.
It, it doesn't make sense. I think we're going to have to have both. The more trails, the more visitors Kyle is going to have.
Right.
And more attractive, so.
When we were, when we went on the tour, when I was on the task force for the original Vibe, that was always brought up about deciding between going with the natural trail versus concrete, and as, and it, and then also some of that other kind of prosthetic type of-
concrete, and as, and it, and then also some of that other kind of prosthetic type of trail on that end. But we have to look at the area that we have here in Kyle. We have a lot of black dirt. We also have a lot of bedrock. So we have, you know, versus over here, it's more desert. So every region of the United States is gonna have a different type of geography kind of area. So I think when we decided to start building ours, concrete was a lot more, not less expensive, but it's just a lot more user-friendly, in a sense, for all the people to use. And, and there's gonna be some areas, when we continue to build the Vibe Trail, where we're not gonna be able to have that natural setting, where we're going to have to maybe build a smaller bridge, or something to where people can cross over. But thank you both for going over there and seeing that, and give us, giving us some feedback. We're really excited. So with, I guess where we're gonna go to, Brian, we're going to Addison?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do they have a trail system that you know of, that, that we could probably get briefed on when we're over there?
I could certainly try to do that.
Maybe not to go there directly, but to see if there's anybody there from the Parks Board that could give us-
Sure.
Some insight on-
They do have some outstanding parks and some facilities, so we can try to put that in the information chart.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you.
All done?
Sir.
Motion adjourned?
Second.
All right, we adjourned.
10:30.